Hey, Michelle, are we all good to go? Okay. All right, where are we at? All right, good evening, everyone. I'm gonna go ahead and call to order this meeting, the Thursday, July 19th, 2008, meeting of the Reno City Planning Commission. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd ask Commissioner Gower to lead us this evening.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Michelle, can we have roll call, please?
Britton Griffith. Peter Gower. Ed Hawkins. John Marshall. Paul Levis is absent. Kevin Weiskie.
Here.
Mark Johnson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, moving down the agenda, item three, public comment. This item is for either public comment on any action item or for any general public comment. Michelle, do we have any request to speak forms on this item?
No, we do not.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to make a statement of this public comment? Seeing none, we will close that and move on to item four, city council liaison reports.
I do not have any updates from council members at this time.
Good, thank you, Sienna. All right, we'll move on to the public hearing portion of the meeting tonight. I just want to start by saying that item 5.1, which is the North Alley's Commerce Center Phase Four, that item was pulled for this evening, so if anybody is here for that, that one will be re-noticed at a different date. So we are going to move on to item 5.2, which is case number LDC 1800056, Project Progress. And we will start with a presentation from the applicant.
Good evening. For the record, Michelle Rambo with Rubicon Design Group, representing the applicant for Project Progress. So you've seen this location before. We were here a couple months ago for a zone change on this site. So now we're back with the SUP for the actual construction of the building. So the site itself is just under 33 acres. It's on North Virginia Street. It's on the south side of North Virginia Street, south of Highway 395, about 900 feet or so east of Stead Boulevard. And I included some site photos for this, just so you can get an idea of what the site looks like. There is a gentle slope. It does go from south and then goes slopes down to the north end, where on North Virginia Street. So the project is for approximately 200,000 square foot warehouse distribution building to be built in two phases. The special use permit that we are here for tonight is for the cuts and fills that are necessary for the grading, and because of there are some major drainage ways that run through the site and around the site. And just as an informational note, the zoning map amendment for the, from mixed use to industrial was approved by the city council yesterday. So that portion of the project is taken care of. So now we can look towards the building. So this, here's the site plan. Lots to take in on this. I'll just point out a few things. There's two different driveways. East driveway, which is the one at the bottom of the site plan there, is for employees and visitors. And the west driveway, which is the one at the top of the picture, is for truck traffic. So they will be separated to minimize conflicts between the two of them. There's also separate truck and employee parking areas, again, to minimize conflict between them. Now, Phase Two, if you look at the site plan, anything with a hashed line is Phase Two. So, lost my mouse, kind of point out a couple of them here. This is employee parking in Phase Two. These are truck parking spaces in Phase Two and up and around this corner as well. And then the building Phase Two is this one corner up here. So because we are here for cuts and fills, here's the grading plan. The red portion of that map is the cut area, so that's where we're gonna be cutting into the hill. So that portion of the site will be downhill from the properties around the red area. The fills on the north, which is the blue part, so that area will require some fill to go in there to build it up, to make the whole site level. And to accomplish this, there will be some retaining walls, up to around 18 and a half feet in portions. Not all of them will be that tall, but portions of them will. So because of the, you know, the obvious amounts of cuts and fills, there was a question about whether this was hillside development, so we did a slope analysis, and which came back, as you can see, 95% of the site has slopes less than 15%. So it's a gradual grade, but it's enough to still require some significant grading in portions. So we do not technically fall under the requirements for hillside grading or hillside development. The other portion of our SUP is for drainage ways, and which are shown in blue on this map. So there's two major drainage ways. The one on the bottom portion of the map, which is the eastern side, is not being disturbed. There's some retaining walls that are being put in place to keep the disturbance away from this, from that particular drainage way. The western drainage way, the one at the top of the map, is the one that's going to be impacted by the drive, the truck driveway, right in this location here that I'm pointing at. And it'll be left open until it gets to the driveway, and then it'll be called, put a culvert in, and then it'll be open again. So the only disturbance will be right underneath the driveway, and the rest of it will be left alone. And the elevations of the building, it's a typical industrial building. There is a mix of architectural detail and paint colors to kind of break up the big expanse of wall. There will be no dock doors facing North Virginia, so as you're driving on North Virginia, it keeps the view best way we can. The tallest point of the building is 45.4 feet. That is just this one portion of the building, right here, where it goes up a little bit for a little architectural pop-out. The majority of the building is 36 feet tall. Landscaping, we have approximately 36% of the site to be landscaped, which is well above the requirement, with combination of trees, shrubs, and ground cover, including revegetation of all the disturbed slopes that we will create with the grading. And the slopes created along North Virginia Street will be heavily landscaped to reduce the visual impact of those as well. Traffic. So we did do a traffic report for this special use permit that was submitted along with the application. The estimated average daily trips for this project are 857, with an AM peak of 72 and a PM peak of 77. Now, based on those numbers, and the type of street that North Virginia is, and with city and RTC standards, there is no recommendation in the traffic study for any additional improvements to North Virginia Street. However, we are proposing three dedicated turn lanes to help traffic move along better along that stretch of North Virginia Street, that will keep the vehicles that are turning into the site out of the travel lanes, so that the, through traffic, will be able to move unimpeded. And that's what this site, what this plan shows you right here. The red lines are where the right turn lanes are, so there will be one into each driveway, and then a left-hand turn lane into the truck driveway. So the trucks will be able to come north on North Virginia Street, move out of the path of travel, to be able to turn into the site. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. We'll listen to staff's presentation and call you back with questions.
All right.
All right. Heather, good evening.
Good evening. Heather Manzo, Assistant Planner for the Record. And the applicant did a good job of going through the elements of the special use permit request that is before you this evening. And I did want to just get into some details regarding some of the concerns that have been brought to staff and the applicant's attention recently, as well as some of the calls that we had received from the Neighborhood Advisory Board and residents surrounding the requested project. So with regard to the special use permit, it is a special use permit for cuts and fills, and also for disturbance of a major drainage way. And I just wanted to go over one more time with regards to the major drainage way, the areas that the applicant has planned to disturb as a part of this request. Michelle, can we zoom out, please? So with the initial proposal, the applicant had actually, just a little bit more if we could. Thank you. And to orient, North Virginia Street is along the top of the map here. The original request included a lot more disturbance of all of the drainage ways that surround the site. And in coordinating with the applicant, they have removed some of the grading that had been proposed along this eastern portion, and also have pulled back their grading that was associated with that northwestern portion. And so the proposal that's before you this evening, really, the only disturbance of the major drainage way is really to get that drive access coming off of North Virginia at that northwest area, so the general area identified there where that driveway will be installed. Other than that, the applicant is staying out of that drainage way setback for all surrounding drainage ways. In addition to that, the site does appear to have an engineered-looking grading plan as it is today, and there is a condition of approval that is proposed with this request, that the grading, especially along North Virginia Street in this area, be broken up into different slope treatments there that could include some walls and some benches with landscaping. The applicant has proposed some rock outcroppings within that area, too, to provide some additional interest along North Virginia Street. And really, staff worked with the applicant in detail on the proposed grading that was, you know, associated with this request. And really, the applicant, the developer, really needs to have a site that will accommodate truck traffic easily, and so they really did need a site that was relatively one grade throughout. And with this, we had discussed the potential for not having as much grading along North Virginia Street. And one of the elements that the applicant identified that is kind of a benefit to this plan is the site will be set above North Virginia Street and will have that landscaped and broken-up slope. And so the use itself will be kind of screened from view from North Virginia Street by this plan. And on the south side of the site, what we have is the railroad tracks are located along this area. And so really, and that southwestern portion is recessed as compared to the surrounding property. And so, again, we have additional screening just by the grading plan that's been proposed. And really, the grading on that southern side is not going to have a significant impact on any surrounding uses or properties. The property surrounding the site is identified in the master plan as industrial. This applicant did process a zoning map amendment to industrial to conform with that master plan designation. And we do see industrial development as the theme kind of over the last year or two, and there are several projects that will be coming before you in the future that are also for those industrial-type uses. So as far as the proposed grading and the limited disturbance of the major drainage ways, staff did analyze those and provide information in your report, and is in support of those requested special use permits. I did want to note that the use, as provided by the traffic study, is anticipated to generate about 857 average daily trips and 77 peak hour trips during the, during the PM hours. And so those both don't trigger an official traffic study, but the applicant did provide one to make sure they had information available to staff to really analyze the request. During the zoning map amendment process, concerns surrounding possible needs along Virginia Street were identified, and the applicant has proposed, as a part of this application, those two right turn lanes to get the trucks off the main eastbound lanes and onto the property, as, along with that left turn pocket going westbound on North Virginia Street. Including, we did meet with and discuss with RTC the potential for, if there were any plans kind of in the works for improvements to North Virginia Street. At this time, North Virginia is not identified in the, in their long-range plan, the RTP. But at a recent RTC board meeting, that was an item that was brought before the board to see if they wanted to explore that topic further, and they did ask staff to go ahead and look into that to see if a potential RTP amendment would be warranted to provide improvements on North Virginia Street between Panther and Stead Boulevard. So RTC is moving forward with the public input process that's gonna be launched on July 27th. That's a 21-day public input process, and as, as is typical for any RTP amendment, at the conclusion of that public input process, they will hold their RTC board meeting on August 17th to present the findings of their, their research and to get input from the board as to whether or not there should be an RTP amendment to include, if it's warranted, to include North Virginia in the RTP. I did want to note that public comments received from this project were primarily surrounding residential properties that are within the area. The calls that I received were generally from members of the community that live within this single-family residential area. Originally, the applicant had proposed this 33-acre site that was originally a part of a larger parcel. Subsequent to application, a parcel map was recorded, and the site that we are looking at today is just that westernmost piece. It is worth noting that there is a mobile home park, two parcels over, and while it's not residentially zoned, it is a residential use at this time. And some of the concerns that were raised would be relevant to their, their location as well as the residence to the east, and that was really surrounding nighttime operations. The calls that I received really were about not knowing that there were overnight concrete pour operations in other developments in this area, and the impact that it has had on their sleeping patterns. And so I did speak with the applicant about this, and I did clarify with them that they do not plan on doing any overnight concrete pours, and so the construction hours that are proposed within the packet are limited to normal construction hours during the day. That really does conclude my presentation, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, this is a public hearing, but before we get to public comment, I would like to bring it back to the commission for disclosures, starting with Commissioner Marshall.
Commissioner Marshall, no disclosures.
Commissioner Griffith, I have a meeting with staff.
Commissioner Johnson, I previously visited the site and received emails. Commissioner Gower previously visited the site and spoke briefly with applicant's representative.
Commissioner Hawkins has, did I?
Commissioner Weiskie has, did I?
Okay, thank you. So we'll open this up for public comment. Michelle, do we have any requests to speak on this item?
No, we do not.
Is there anyone here that would wish to make a public comment on this item? Seeing none, we will close public comment, bring it back to the commission for questions. Who'd like to get us started? Commissioner Gower? No, sorry, Commissioner Weiskie. Commissioner Gower. Commissioner Weiskie, sorry about that, thank you.
Heather, please. In your presentation, you mentioned that it, the northeast corner, I believe, that's of, of the, that's the drainage way to the south, that's not going to receive any grading whatsoever, right? That's gonna be untouched?
Yes, so the, the drainage way on that northeast side of the property is not going to be touched. The only area that's being impacted is just where the roadway is coming into the site.
Okay, on the, on the west drainage way, then, is there in, any improvements being made to that drainage way to create detention ponds?
Their detention, as far as I'm aware, is within this area here, and I can turn it over to Shawnee to elaborate more.
Shawnee Denigan, Associate Civil Engineer for the Record. So they are not proposing any retention or detention facilities with the major drainage way. They are doing all their mitigation for their impacts on site within three various ponds.
Okay, but they're, they're piping underneath their truck access road, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So when they do that, then that's gonna increase the, the speed or the velocity of the water flowing through that, because it's not going to be slowed down by nature. Isn't that correct?
They'll have to keep it the same as is today.
So how does that work?
So they'll analyze the amount of flow that that drainage way receives, and then size the pipes accordingly to convey that flow at the same velocity and flow amount.
Okay. Seems to me if you start to run water through a pipe, it's going to pick up speed, and if you don't put something before or after that road access, you're, you are going to create, excuse me, not you, the developer is going to create an erosion problem on the north side of that truck access road, if the water is not slowed down at some point.
So when they lay the pipes in, they can vary the slopes of the pipes and the size to accommodate all the velocities that that pipe sees, and then they can put in energy dissipation structures on the lower end if they need to slow down that flow.
Perfect, thank you. No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Gower.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Question for the applicant, I guess. I'm looking on page 13, 12, no, sorry. Looking at the parking table.
Parking, yes.
And I'm trying to figure out, page 10, why are we talking about so much future parking? Why is it being overparted by so much?
The parking analysis that was done with the initial submittal was done slightly incorrectly. It was counting the truck parking. So that initial number was including the truck parking, and so the new numbers do not include the truck parking, so those have gone down.
So I'm reading in the staff report, total parking provided is 184% of the code requirements. You're saying that the truck parking is no longer relevant? I'm just trying to understand that table and the analysis related to the parking. And it's, it looks like on the site plan, too, that it's all in there.
There are operational needs that the business that's going into the site needs, that they have minimum standards for employee parking, so that's partly where those higher numbers come from. But also, again, like I said, when I originally did the parking analysis, I was counting the truck parking spaces, which don't count, which are not used to count towards parking. So that's why some of them are a little higher in, than what you would expect to see. So this, I believe, is the correct one, which shows that we are, that there are, we are overparked, we, we know that. But there are, like I said, there's operational issues, and maybe that would be a better question for the applicant to answer than me, because he, he's more into that than I am.
And I'm specifically interested in knowing what, what use is gonna require 145 parking spaces for the warehouse component that's not in the spaces that are accommodated by a typical warehouse that's shown in that required column.
Sure. Hi, my name is Tom McCary. I'm the Development Manager for Project Progress. So this development is a build-to-suit for OnTrak Shipping, which is a shipping company with similar operations to a FedEx or UPS. The reason they need that much parking is because of the actual employee counts. There's a very sizable office component, which will have a lot of office employees, as well as a few shifts coming and going throughout the day. And so the parking is designed to accommodate, you know, incoming shifts and outgoing shifts at the same time, because there's a, an overlap there in timing. And so it just, it boiled down to operational requirements for OnTrak.
And so I guess a follow-up question for staff, then, on that, related to the, about three paragraphs underneath that table, it talks about the landscaping requirements. Doesn't sound like those were fully met in what was presented. What was the, what was the gap there, so I can understand this?
So Heather Manzo, Assistant Planner for the Record. As far as landscape requirements for industrially-zoned properties, the front yard is the only area that's required to be parked, or landscaped. In addition to that, parking lot areas do need to meet the standard requirements for code. And that section, two paragraphs below the table that discusses additional requirements for excess parking, that triggers additional landscape requirements should a development exceed the number of parking spaces by more than 110% of what our code requires. And so, given that the applicant has proposed excess parking, they will need to meet those standards when they come in for their building permit. Does that help to answer your question?
And so particularly the revegetation component, that doesn't count as part of the required landscaping area, so where is the landscaping gonna be on the site if those 145 spaces are needed?
I do apologize, I don't know why my printout is black and white, but this is the landscape plan, and so it does show that most of the formal landscaping is really focused along North Virginia Street and the project entries. And then the south portion of their property, they really have identified for their truck parking, and this area here is their employee parking. And so that is the area that has the formal landscaping that the applicant has shared with staff meets the standards for parking lot and front yard landscaping for the site. In the applicant's presentation, it was noted that there's 34% of the site that is to be landscaped. Our code does not acknowledge or count revegetated areas toward that required landscape area, so those, those areas will not count ultimately toward that required landscaping, nor the additional landscaping that would be required with the excess parking.
And I guess, I'm wondering about the trade-off, and I understand that there are probably some operational constraints, as the applicant mentioned, in the southern portion of the site there, where the truck parking is, but I'm wondering about, you know, the trade-offs and the potential impacts of, you know, having all of this area paid for parking and then concentrating all of the vegetation in one portion of the site. I mean, are we creating a situation where there's gonna be accelerated runoff, urban heat island, things like that, that go along with large, unlandscaped, unshaded parking areas?
I believe this meets the standards for, for drainage and mitigating for the site itself. I can turn it over to Shawnee to also further elaborate, if you would like. And then from the perspective of excess parking and the additional landscaping, the plans that we've received, I don't believe would meet that standard as it is today, but that's a code requirement, and so if this project is approved, it's something the applicant will have to meet and show in their plans when they come forward with a building permit.
Okay. If applicant's representative could chime in to Shawnee when you're done, when you're done.
Shawnee Denigan, Associate Civil Engineer for the Record. So they did account for all the impervious surfaces in their drainage study. The landscape areas, depending on the slope of them, they'll incorporate different measures, I guess you could say, to prevent that, whether they put in plugs to plug the soil that become vegetation, they can put in some different mulches, rocks, that can be surrounding the landscaping, so there are different features they can do if they need to stabilize that soil. But it also, they themselves, the landscaping, prevent that impervious surface for the water to infiltrate in.
And so we don't have any, any standards for this type of development to require landscaping in like a contiguous area of paved surface? Don't we have that for commercial areas? Don't we have that for commercial areas?
So I think Heather Manzo, Assistant Planner, again. To answer your question, for parking areas, they are required to provide those landscaped island areas. And you're probably correct in your thought process that the semi-truck areas are probably going to need to include that, the landscape islands in order to meet the code requirements for that. It may be designed in a different manner than the standard car parking to make sure that flow and ingress and egress for those trucks is accommodated safely. But yes, I do believe that landscaping would need to be incorporated into the parking areas for the semi-trucks on that southern portion as well.
Okay.
I could add just a general comment if you care to listen. Derek Wilson with Rubicon Design Group on behalf of the applicant. I just wanted to point out, this isn't the first time we've come up against this issue of having excess parking, excess per city code on an industrial site. And usually what it boils down to is that the developer, the applicant, feels it's safer to have generous parking areas because a bigger issue for them, and I think for the community, would be having spillover into the neighborhood. Where if workers arriving had to park on neighborhood streets or if particularly truck stacking out on North Virginia, if they couldn't access the site in a timely way. I think in older industrial areas, sometimes in Sparks, car dealerships on Kitsky Lane, you see this where they just weren't designed for modern traffic. And you get stacking on the arterial streets or in the neighborhoods. So I think it's, it's a more prudent design to allow that potential expansion if we can meet the landscaping code, rather than have impact spill off of our site. So that's all I wanted to add. Thanks.
And is it true, Derek, that there's, that there is an operational component in that truck area? Or is that something that you're proposing that there is going to be a landscaping component there? Because the disconnect for me is that what I'm looking at on the screen now is just, you know, this large contiguous asphalt surface and there's no landscaping in there. And I know it's a code requirement, it's going to be part of the building permit, but for my decision tonight, I'm just not seeing it. So is that something that, you know, we can get some assurance on?
I probably have to hand this back to people who have dealt with the site plan development more than I have. But certainly we're going to comply with code.
Yeah, are you going to cut me off? Are you just, you're going to take care of it? That's, I need to shut up now?
For the record, Senior Reader, Senior Planner, Heather, already reviewed a little bit of our code requirements. But for parking area landscaping, you do need twenty-five square feet of landscaping per parking space and then an additional ten for each excess additional space. So all of these parking areas will need to be landscaped per code. That hasn't been conditioned because it is code. But we do definitely see that the landscape plan that you have before you today doesn't show it in that lot where more truck parking is anticipated.
Thank you. That's the answer I was looking for.
Additional questions? Mr. Griffiths.
Commissioner Griffiths for the record, applicant's representative. Hi.
Hey.
So I spoke with Heather earlier today and we saw or heard it in the presentation, but I wanted to get some assurances on the record so that we're sensitive to the RV park that's next door, even though it's not listed as a residential use. That if you can give me just some reasoning behind why you didn't look for a condition to be doing construction hours outside of what the limitations are.
Well, the construction that we're planning to happen, the reason, my understanding is the reason that they're doing the overnight pours in the other place is because of the heat during the day and they need cooler conditions. Our construction is going to be happening during probably more of the fall and winter months. So it's not going to have the heat issue that they do next door. Yeah, no, thank you.
Additional questions? Mr. Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got a couple of questions for the fire chief.
Good evening, Dave Cochran, Real Fire Chief.
Chief, on the staff report, page seven, it indicates that there's a nine-minute time period when engines from Station Nine or Station Ten could get to this area to put out or extinguish a fire, as well as being overburdened. Can you give us a look-see at what's going to take place once this is developed? If we have too much going on for the fire department, not enough men or equipment to get to that site?
So one point of clarification, eight minutes from Station Nine, nine minutes from Station Ten. The station numbers and response times are a little confusing, interrelated there. But eight minutes is within our acceptable response time. The comment that we included, the concern that we expressed, was that we are experiencing a, we've experienced a consistent rise in our call volume over the years. We ran over forty-two thousand calls last year. We're trending for about that number again this year. That's the highest call volume we've ever had as a fire department. So without additional staffing, that places a burden on departments as a whole. So that was the concern. And of course, as you add more development, that burden becomes greater. So hopefully that answered your question.
Yes, one other question. Their plans indicate that they're going to use natural vegetation, the existing sagebrush there around the perimeter. Could we as a whole do something better than that rather than?
I think as, as the specific plan comes in, plans come in, we would look at it and evaluate that. And opposed to threat, our recommendation would be for some sort of clearance, you know, much like a wildland urban interface type requirement where you have defensible space around the building and not use the native grasses or bushes like that.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Certainly.
I'd like to actually, and I should have done this right after Commissioner Wysocki, I'd like to piggyback on a question about the major drainage way. So I'll start with Heather, if you can put that exhibit back up. I'm a little concerned, I'm looking at the, actually the southwest portion of the site. So the major drainage way, drainage way that's being altered at the driveway, further to the south, it appears that we are doing cuts right up against the edge of the property line with the drainage way on the other side of that. And in looking at that, I'm thinking we're going to have cuts lower than the flow line of the drainage way right at that point. And I'm concerned of how that's going to be dealt with. I understand the one over on the east side, we've got a retaining wall, we're not going to have a problem. But here, seems like we're doing some grading that is going to impact even though we seem to be outside of the edge of that. Has staff looked at that and considered that as a part of what we're looking at here?
I can turn it over to the applicant to further elaborate. But in the map that I requested and that's been provided before you this evening, that blue area that depicts the drainage way is not only the drainage way channel itself, but also that required setback from that hundred-year line. And so what they're depicting there is that they're meeting the requirement for the setback from the drainage way itself. And so from the point where they're establishing their wall along that area, that is meeting the setback requirement from the, from that high point during the hundred-year flood event. As far as how that wall and the grading is going to be engineered to ensure that there isn't some sort of seepage or wetness that would occur, I would like to turn that over to the applicant to address.
Okay. Or Shawnee, who stood up behind you right when you started to talk.
Okay. Shawnee Denigan, Associate Civil Engineer for the record. So when we permit retaining walls, they're permitted structurally. And we will look at those designs individual from the building permit. And on this scenario, they could look at what wouldn't be needed, if anything, to prevent any just flow path through any of those walls. But it would be designed with the final design if needed. Because there might not be any influence from that drainage channel too. I believe there's a wall proposed on that side based on those dark lines, so.
So then I'll have the applicant come up and respond to this as well, just because I see what you're saying, but I still have a little bit of a concern. Good, I needed a third person. A fourth person, actually, this is perfect.
John Browning, I'm with Tectonics Design Group, we're the civil engineer on this. The wall is designed separately with structural team with influence from the geotechnical expert. So that would all be analyzed and verified. If something were needed to mitigate, it'd be added. If the wall needed to be higher or have drainage behind it, or additional swales for protection were required, that would all be recommended by the geotech. And so that's all something that'll be done as part of the wall design.
Okay, so you guys are convinced as a part of what you're doing here that the grading up to the edge of the property line will not create a situation where eventually that's going to, I guess, hop the curb?
Yes, we are, that's what, because it's outside of the setback. If we were into actually like the drainage range, I would be worried. But we're out past the setback, so I don't believe we'll have any concerns there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Christian, additional questions? Discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Hawkins?
Questions for staff, Shawnee? Inside, our staff report indicates that sewer will be flowing to the Reno Sted Sewer Plant. After talking with the applicant, they are trying to get a connection following Panatoni's connection that will go to Raleigh Heights and end up down in, what, Tumworf is that?
Shawnee Denigan, Associate Civil Engineer for the record, that's correct. They're trying to configure their sewer to tie into the North Valley's Commerce Center, which eventually it will be pulled over in that project. They're trying to pull that sewer flow over to Tumworf. Make sure I got those.
Is there any way we can get some assurances that that will happen? Otherwise, we have to start looking at the effluent going downhill to Reno Sted Water Reclamation Facility. That just adds to our burden for Swan Lake, that's what we're going after.
Janelle Thomas, Senior Civil Engineer for the record. So what I will say is that the sewage treatment requirements for this type of facility is going to be relatively low volume process. They are, they were initially looking at a lift station in order to accommodate their flows to get to the system out at Reno Sted. I would say that there, I can't, I could do a quick calc for you if you'd like to see what the rough calculation of their anticipated flows would be. But like I said before, it will be a really low volume of sewage that we're talking about with this particular facility.
The reason why I ask that is because if they're, if they have so many parking spaces there and they're going to run shift work, I haven't seen anything for twenty-four-hour operations yet in my staff report. And if they did went twenty-four hours, then we have, you know, three shifts, let's say a hundred people per shift. They all got to do something in there.
Right, agreed. And I would defer the number of staff members and employees to the applicant himself to identify that. But typically what we have seen with these types of developments is real, real-time flows out of these facilities is relatively low compared to, say, a processing or manufacturing business.
I guess my next question is for the applicant's representative. Do we know the approximate number of employees are planned on being in this facility?
Tom McCary, Development Manager with Scannell Properties, for the record. Unfortunately, off the top of my head, I am not quite certain what those counts are. Michelle, do you happen to know? I'd have to dig those up. I would really just be making a guess, which I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to make an uneducated guess. But I would imagine, I don't know, apologies.
All right, I'm going at, we did Walmart years ago. And when I remember their sewer study, because that was my big deal then, was they were going to have two-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand gallons of waste and effluent going to the sewer plant per day. I know that sounds high, but if you take a look at the employees as well as the people visiting the store, that's why I'm asking the question. Because if you're going to be doing shift work at fifty or a hundred people per shift, we have to take that into account for what's going downhill.
I agree, and I believe all that has been taken into consideration for the design of this facility. I just, off the top of my head, I'm unsure of those numbers.
Thank you.
Commissioner Marshall.
Wait, wait, come back, come back. Both? So then I take it you wouldn't be opposed to a condition that Commissioner Hawkins recommended of conditioning the project on tie-in to Tumworf?
Can you please restate the question?
Would you oppose or would you agree to a condition saying you can get your building permit and your special use permit if you tie into Tumworf?
I'm not prepared to make a statement on that. We're currently analyzing all the sewer options ahead of us or in front of us. So apologies, I can't comment on that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, point of order here, we're looking at two things tonight and two things only. One is cuts and fills, and the other is a disturbance to a major drainage way. And that, that's it.
I disagree.
That's what is before us, that's point of order.
No, what's before us is the special use permit. What gets us here, what gets it here, is the fact that you do cuts and fills. You still have to make all the findings, that's why all the findings are in our staff report. Otherwise, we'd just be making findings relevant to cuts and fills, and we're not. So we have to make all the findings.
If I may, Heather Manzo, Assistant Planner for the record. To answer your question with regard to sewer generation per day, we calculated it out based on the building square footage and it would be approximately sixty thousand gallons per day that this site would generate when it's completely built out. And then with regards to a potential condition requiring that sewer be sent to a specific treatment facility, staff would not recommend a condition be placed on that, on this project. At this time, should that development further to the east not take place, there would not be that connection to the Truckee Meadows Plant. And so this site would be sewered to Reno Sted. There is adequate capacity at this time to serve this project at the Reno Sted facility. And so regardless of whether it goes to Reno Sted to the north or off to the east, at the time that the permit is requested and a will serve letter is issued, there will be adequate services to provide for this development.
May I continue?
Pardon me?
May I continue?
Mr. Marshall.
Heather? So you're saying really the opportunity here is if the development, I'm sorry, I've forgotten the name of it, begins with a P, right? What? Not this particular one, but the one to the east that would be depended on, Pennington?
The, no, the North Virginia Commerce Center.
But if that is built, then there would be an opportunity.
And, and so we'll take a look at it at that time. And really, it'll be a coordinated effort between our Community Development Department and Public Works as to how that line is installed and where that sewage will go.
So if there is, we could fashion a condition that if there is an opportunity, that the opportunity should be taken.
Staff would not recommend a condition be placed on this project regarding where that sewage will be headed when it is treated.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I've got four more questions and I'll wrap it up. Applicants' representative, please. Have you set aside property, because I didn't see it on my map, when the time comes when RTC expands North Virginia?
Yes, we are.
I didn't see that on there.
Sorry, yes, I'll use this map just because it's handy. We have already designed the site to include the ultimate right-of-way.
Okay. Power lines going through about a third of the property? Those will be moved at a certain time, I guess? Okay. Consideration for residenials and Friendly Mobile Home Park on the southwest corner?
Yeah, the, the topic of residential adjacency was discussed with staff before the SUP was even submitted. And we were told we didn't need to because otherwise we would have submitted it for residential adjacency. But because of the grading, let me move this up here. Because of the way the grading is designed, this area here is going to be lower than the Mobile Home Park, which is approximately over here. So you've got, you know, kind of a natural berm that we're creating here. This will be higher, this will be lower. So the truck noise won't, it'll bump up against the slope of the, so that'll take care of the noise. And again, another issue with residential adjacency is privacy.
And because the, the site will be so much lower than the mobile home park, there's no risk of this project impeding in their privacy.
Okay. One other thing. On the egress going out of the west exit, it looks like you're going to have maybe a line of sight problem there. Can we clear that up during the process?
Absolutely. If there turns out to be a line of sight issue, that will get redesigned to match what needs to happen.
All the questions I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Gower?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thought I was done with my questions, but then I saw Dan from RTC over there, and it triggered a question for staff related to trip reduction. Heather, why do some projects, we see employee trip reduction and some we don't?
Heather Manzo, Assistant Planner, I actually am not familiar with any recent projects that we have had that have required an employee trip reduction, and so I'd like to turn that over to Sienna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the record, Sienna Reed, Senior Planner. We do encourage major employer, employers to implement trip reduction programs. Just given the size of this warehouse, it is a fairly large building, but depending on the number of employees per square foot, which for an industrial warehouse of this size is usually between 1,000 and 2,000 employees per square foot, you would really only have somewhere in the range of 100 to 200 employees. So we haven't suggested that a trip reduction program be implemented with this. Certainly, there will be multimodal transportation opportunities in addition to a potential widening project that has been discussed. There are planned RTP improvements in terms of multimodal improvements, and I will verify with Heather. I believe that there's transit in close proximity to this particular site as well.
To Heather Manzo, Assistant Planner, to clarify where the transit line is, I would like to turn that over to the applicant. To my knowledge, the, the actual transit services available to date are really on the north side of the freeway, Onsted Boulevard, near the middle school. With the level of development that is occurring on the south side of the freeway, I do anticipate that they will probably be revisiting, you know, transit services within this area. But currently, the, the transit service that I am aware of is, is on the north side of the freeway, Onsted Boulevard.
Thank you. I'll save my next part for discussion.
I don't think there's any further questions, so if you want to start in with the next part as discussion, go right ahead.
So where I was going with this, it's, it's this project and the, the trip production component, and Sienna's answer was fine that, you know, there's some sort of threshold in there. We're looking at major employers. I'm not sure what that threshold is, but as this area continues to evolve, it seems like there's an opportunity as evolving employment centers, similar to like what's happening out in Tric, that we could, you know, think about it as a city, adding in these employee trip production strategies, things like van pool and car pooling and things like that that RTC's program provides. So that's where I was going with that. I wouldn't mind seeing some sort of condition related to it that could be considered a model for other developments in this area of a similar type. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you. Additional comments or discussion? Or a motion? I'm open to any of the above.
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion.
Commissioner Gower, the floor is yours.
Okay. And the case number, LDC 18-00056, Project Progress, Based Upon Compliance With The Applicable Findings. And I think there was a, an issue here with the motion. I can make the findings, subject to the conditions with the addition of a condition related to employee trip reduction, which is a voluntary program that the RTC works with the employers to implement.
Okay. I have a motion. I have a second. Commissioner Hawkins?
Mr. Chair, I can't actually give my seal of approval unless we are to do a condition on the sewer. And it can be written as plainly as it can be talked about. And that's just if it's available from the connection standpoint of the next warehouse that's going to be going in adjacent to there. If that's available for hookup by Project Progress, I would like to see that happen rather than have that shipped down to Reno Sted Sewer Plant. Otherwise, I can't make the, the findings, see.
I bet on the same position as Commissioner Hawkins.
I'd like to get staff's input on this since we were specifically told that wasn't a good condition to make. So Janelle, could you maybe lay out the reasons why this? I mean, I understand where Commissioner's coming from, certainly. So why would staff have an issue with what's being proposed as a condition?
Janelle Thomas, Senior Civil Engineer, for the record. I would advise that when the final permit comes in, that the most appropriate time to determine the route in which that treatment is proposed should be determined at that time. If we tie it down too tightly, we could hamstring the project to be reliant on a service which may not be in, it may not be the most appropriate path to sewer the project, once the final project is being presented. Timing falls into it. As, as you all are aware, we do have some timing issues out in this general region. And I do know that the project applicant is working in conjunction with the adjacent property owner, but that would be a private agreement between the two properties because there would be a need to most likely provide some sort of infrastructure from this facility onto the adjacent property.
Sienna, did you have a follow-up on that?
Yeah, no, I could just, thank you, Mr. Chair. Sienna Reed, for the record, elaborate a little bit more on what Janelle is saying. So, you know, while there are discussions ongoing about the potential to be able to maybe reroute some sewer to Tom Wharf, the projects that are being discussed are, have not been heard before the Planning Commission yet. They still have a variety of processes to go through. There's definitely a timing issue. And we will certainly continue to work to, I think the, the proper term is scalp, sewage generation over to Tom Wharf to provide additional flexibility at Reno Sted. But we just don't exactly know how all of that timing is going to work at this point in time. So we are endeavoring to do that, but don't really want to hamstring this project.
So as a follow-up to both, because I understand what you're both saying, but from what I'm hearing the commissioners asking for, and I won't speak for them, but I'm going to, since I have the microphone, I'm going to. The way I understand the condition is that, I guess, at the point of whether it's the will-serve letter, whether it's the final design, whether it's whatever, the condition, as I'm hearing it, is stated if available. Now, I'm not sure the legalities of that kind of language. I would look to, to the attorneys for something like that. But I, I think if there is a potential here for us to address what is an ongoing issue with the sewer in that area by at least acknowledging that if there is another process or another vehicle out there, and I'm not sure how that works as a condition, because that's, you know, we're, we're conditioning them if available. Well, if it's available, as you say, it may not be feasible. I don't know if this is a staff's decision or what, but I guess that's what I'm trying to, to understand. If there's, if there's a way, and, and feel free commissioners to weigh in on this as well, but if, if that is truly what is, you know, if it's just that, hey, if this is tracking along, if something slows on this project or accelerates on another project, that this is an option. So I guess that's where, I, I'm, I'm wondering if there's some language that can walk that line.
I'm a bit concerned about the, the language if available. To what degree does that condition allow staff to make that decision? And who has the authority to make that final decision? As I stated before, the final determination of where sewage flows are anticipated to be connected is typically determined at the final design phase, when the plans are in for permit application, and then the proper review and acceptance and availability of a will-serve would be issued at that time. Not only do the building departments, the planning department, the engineering department, but also we do collaborate with our public works department very closely for these particular issues. So again, I would request that you allow the standard of the practice for sewage disposal to be determined at the time of the permit.
So then, to follow along with that, is it fair to say that if available, again, to use a term that we're not going to put in there, that if this situation is created where the possibility exists, is this the kind of situation, especially in light of what you're hearing at this commission, that staff would be looking at a preference to have it not go to the Sted Treatment Plant? And, and again, I'm, I'm looking to, to address the commissioners here in terms of their, you know, their concerns. By the time that final will-serve letter is going to be in place, staff should know if there are other options available.
And that is correct. The Panatoni Project, which is the North Valley Commerce Center, which is pursuing its development, they have completed two phases of their proposed four, and they have been in close communication with our public works department to accommodate flows that currently are going, are going to the Lemon Valley Treatment Plant. Part of the scalping project that is proposed and is in progress of being completed does accommodate the flows from that particular development. So that is part of that capital project, which is currently underway. The, this particular project, while being contemplated, has not been finalized in that plan. If the, if the opportunity does present itself as, as, as viable, then I would say that they will absolutely, we will, you know, push them in that direction.
Okay. Thank you. So I'm going to bring it back to the commission. I have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Gower with one modification to that. I have heard additional discussion with respect to other commissioners' thoughts on that. What I would like to do is continue with looking for either the person, the commissioner making the motion, to modify his motion accordingly to what we're hearing or not. And then I would like to look at either getting a second or not having a second and push the vote forward based on that.
Mr. Chairman, this is Greg Salter with the City Attorney's Office. The concern that I have is that there needs to be an essential nexus between this condition and the purpose of the special use permit. If I'm not mistaken, they have as a matter of right to build the warehouse. And as I understand it, that the warehouse is being built in concert with, with our regulations. And so the only reason for a special use permit under our code is the drainage way, disturbing of the drainage way and the grading. And so while we need to make, we need to make all of the findings, they need to be limited to the, the impact of the purpose of the special use permit. So if, if the grading and the drainage way has a significant impact on sewer, well, then, you know, you may have trouble finding the, the, making the finding. But otherwise, you may be making a finding and requiring a condition that's not allowed because they're already, they already have the right to build.
Thank you. And I think that's what Commissioner Wysocki was getting to at the very beginning, so I appreciate that. And I will again bring it back to Commissioner Gower. You've heard the discussion. I will let you restate as you would like, and we will push forward based on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My motion is the same as stated previously.
Commissioner Wysocki, I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
I'm a no.
So I have motion carrying four votes to two, Commissioners Hawkins and Marshall in opposition. Okay. We will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is six unfinished business and public hearings. We are looking at case number LDC 18-00025 and LDC 18-0030037, the Daybreak Master Plan and PUD zoning map amendments. And we will start with a presentation from the applicant, who is finding his way into the room.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, for the record, Andy Drilling with Wood Rogers. Before I begin, Mr. Chairman, if I may, our, our presentation's a little longer than the 15 minutes would allow, and we have a, a kind of a little special treat at the end for you. If it pleases the commission, may I get an extra 10 minutes?
I'm going to give you five. This is the second time that you've been before us, so really, we're looking at an update on what we had had the first time. So I don't want you to rush so that I can't understand you, but I'm, I'm, you know, we're anticipating this could be a lot from our side. So if you can limit it to 20 minutes, I'd appreciate it.
I will try to cruise through as quickly as I can. Just to give you another update, a lot of the faces you see behind me are the same. That we're here in the May 16th Planning Commission Workshop. So we have our experts, our technical experts, here to answer any questions that you may have. At that workshop, we showed the exhibit above, a little infographic talking about really the housing crisis that we're in as a region. I wanted to update you on a few of these numbers because some of the, now that we're into the third quarter, the second quarter numbers are in. In particular, unemployment came down, which is, is a good thing, but we've, we've got full employment and more people coming into the market. Also, multifamily vacancy rate went down to 1.58%, which is really an anemic rate. If you think a healthy rate is in the 3%, 3, 4% range, that's not a healthy rate that we have right now. We, and then across the board, have really a housing issue that's, that's at the forefront now and getting worse by the day. This example, again, we showed last time. On the left side of your screen, the South Suburban Submarket, which Daybreak Project is in, makes up nearly 40% of the overall new home sales in our greater region. When we look at all the approved projects that are on the board for that area, we are, and, and basically apply a lot absorption based on last year, which was a pretty average to below-average year. If we expand that out by the end of 2021, we are effectively out of lots in, in the Southeast Submarket. So 40% of your market is now kind of cut off, and the Daybreak Project comes on in that 2020 timeframe. We've conducted a number of, quite a bit of public outreach, going back even to before we even submitted the PUD to the city of Reno. We've had over 40 meetings, tours with surrounding property owners, stakeholders and homeowners associations. We've conducted three neighborhood meetings. The noticing for that meeting, we went out 1,500 feet. The typical is 750 feet, so we doubled it to try and cast a wide net. We went to the NABs four times, and then obviously, we had the Planning Commission Workshop, and we want to express our thanks to staff for pushing us in that direction. I think that was a really productive time and gives us the opportunity to be more efficient tonight. Again, just reiterating, Daybreak provides a lot of solutions. It provides much-needed housing to the market. It provides an innovative and new housing solution to increase attainability and track a myriad of buyers, and we'll get into the meat of this. It's also a smart development that links existing neighborhoods. It's an infill development. It links together the existing neighborhoods of South Meadows and It links together the existing neighborhoods of South Meadows and Donner Springs and has a very low environmental impact due to its infill location and doesn't require the extension of city services or utilities. Again, just to remind you, it's nine hundred and eighty acre ranch located along the New Veterans Parkway. The, this infill development connects South Meadows to the south and Donner Springs Hidden Valley area to the north. At the workshop, we came away with a series of action items. All of these action items are now included and have been addressed in the PUD. We've ensured that the mixed neighborhoods achieve the density goals that are consistent with the Reimagine Reno Master Plan. We've addressed the need for affordable and workforce housing. We're ensuring public safety needs are met through an agreement with the City of Reno Fire. You had questions about the trails. The trails will be maintained by the Homeowners Association. You had questions about the trailhead at the community park. We've addressed that through pedestrian safety design standards that are included in the PUD. We've required interpretive signage along the trails to help with that historic element of the, in the environment, to have that interpretive element to, to the project. We've also worked with staff, with finance staff, and come up, come to an agreement on all the assumptions and the fiscal analysis, and the project is, the fiscal impact is net positive. I won't go over a lot of the technical aspects of this because we covered those agnostium last time, but Daybreak addresses the development hurdles that are in front of it. Whether it's the hydrology, we're providing one hundred and twenty-five percent of the code required volume mitigation. Wetlands, we're significantly mitigating our disturbed wetlands. We're already a step ahead. We've got our four oh four permit in with this Corps of Engineers. We've had our conference meeting with them and are working on revisions. Mercury contamination, we already have an approved remedial action plan with NDEP. Traffic, the Southeast Connector, now that it's open, Veterans Parkway open, fantastic roadway, great amenities with the bike trail. It planned for Daybreak into its travel model. And then we've incorporated additional traffic calming measures in the project as well as outside of the project boundary. And then feral horses, we're basically employing the best practices and following the leadership of the different horse advocacy groups that are in, in the area. Just to walk you through a few small changes that were made to the master plan. The master plan still consists of basically the same mix of uses. On the right side over here is the former master plan. We had a little bit of single family here. We basically swapped it and put mixed neighborhood up against the New Veterans Parkway with single family there. Not a big change. Really, when we get to, and I'll get to the meat of this and later in my presentation, this project significantly aligns with Reimagine Reno, and we'll walk through that in a little bit. The development plan, some minor modifications, some of the feedback that you guys had last time, looking to basically find a way to guarantee that, you know, we had a long discussion about that mixed neighborhood, that missing middle housing product, and how can we ensure that that is going to actually be built in this project? So we made some modifications to the land plan. This area down here, which is our suburban mixed-use town center, we took out the single family, and now it is mixed neighborhood. So it's that higher density product. Now we have kind of all higher density stuff in that mixed neighborhood. Swapped some stuff around up at the north end here, just moved the mixed neighborhood closer to veterans. And then as well, changed this area from single family to mixed neighborhood as well. So some minor modifications, again, getting us further towards that goal of that missing middle. What we did to ensure is we established minimum densities now that are in the multifamily and mixed neighborhood development areas. So effectively, there's, in a lot of these areas, there's now a minimum density, there's a floor and there's a ceiling. So we've got a range that we've got to work in. That provides you with that guarantee that ultimately, when you see tentative maps come forward, they're going to be in that product type that you're looking for. Like I just said, that underlying master plan of mixed, basically that, we've got some areas of single family. So these, these areas here, if you notice, they're called out as single family in our land development plan, but the underlying master plan is mixed neighborhood. So even those single family neighborhoods have a minimum density that's akin to the mixed neighborhood. Effectively, when you look at Reimagine Reno, mixed neighborhood allows for SF four zoning as a compatible zoning. So we basically are saying, in those areas, you will have that smaller lot, single family detached. What this did to our housing mix is it kind of flipped it around from what you saw last time. We still have the fifteen percent multifamily, seven hundred units dedicated to multifamily. But now, instead of predominantly single family detached, it's actually fifty-six percent are in that higher density, single family detached and low-density multifamily. Basically, that missing middle housing product that's identified in Reimagine Reno and in the housing study that informed Reimagine Reno. Thirty percent then is dedicated to your more traditional, single-family detached, you know, six thousand square foot lots, kind of what we're used to seeing in the South Meadows area. So these mixed neighborhoods, as we looked at this in, now in the context of not just this missing middle, but how does this missing middle impact our overall affordability strategy? These missed, what we really found is, is our hypothesis was proved out through the numbers, these mixed neighborhoods are effectively affordable by design. So Reimagine Reno has a goal of providing workforce housing for up to one hundred and twenty percent of the area median income, AMI. So playing an example of this, AMI is a series of numbers, not a number, first of all. It's, it's an index based on household sizes. So we looked at family sizes of three to five people. That would kind of be the typical size that we would anticipate in, in a mixed neighborhood, a townhome-type product. Looking at what one hundred and twenty-five, one hundred and twenty percent, sorry, of AMI looks like as an income range, it's between seventy-nine and ninety-five thousand dollars. That's all based on the HUD's two thousand and eighteen home-adjusted income limits for our metropolitan statistical area. Now we assume thirty percent income goes towards housing. Again, that's coming out of both the feds and in Reimagine Reno. And we apply that to what is the affordability of a house for the, for those income ranges. It works out to be between three hundred and thirty and four hundred thousand dollars. Now that range is really in the ballpark of what we anticipate for this type of product. There's even product in the market right now, albeit there's very few of it, but there's product in the market right now within that price range. So now this sort of changes our affordability strategy to be a three-pronged approach. First of all, we'll have multifamily units, seven hundred units, about fifteen percent dedicated. Those are primarily, primarily be market rate units, which will aim to bolster the existing supply and help to stabilize rents in the market. As we saw, there's some, some issues with that right now, so more units on the market is a good thing. The mixed neighborhood, which is this missing middle project or product, really becomes the, at the forefront because this fifty-six percent of our homes dedicated to that missing middle, these are attainable by design. They're a product that is aimed at that median to slightly above median household income buyer. And then finally, our third leg of the stool, if you will, for affordability is we have dedicated and have submitted an agreement to the city to contribute upwards of two point three five million dollars to the city's newly-formed land trust. And that money can then go to invest in affordable housing throughout their greater Reno community. And ultimately, it gets paid with each tentative map that we sell to builders. So it can get paid in larger chunks for them to go invest in, you know, very low-income affordable housing projects. They can go invest in stabilizing gentrifying neighborhoods. I mean, really, the, the options are open to that organization and what they dedicate that money to. Emergency services, we talked last time about, we have great coverage for fire. We're within a six-minute or less response time. What we did, what we've been working on with Reno Fire is really the fire apparatus reimbursement agreement. They have some capital needs at Fire Station Twelve in particular. So we've got an agreement in with them to reimburse them for an ambulance, a fire truck, and an expansion to Station Twelve. Parks, we submitted a park agreement to address residential construction tax for the community park, which is this centrally-located park. We have enhanced pedestrian crossings at that trailhead, and the trails ultimately are going to be maintained by the HOA. Schools, we submitted a school agreement to Washoe County School District to identify these school sites and the mechanisms and to waive some of the statutory timeframes so that they have the time to actually purchase their schools when they're needed, not ahead of time, or well ahead of time, I guess I should say. Traffic improvements, traffic has basically stayed the same. We still have the two signals on Veterans Parkway, the signal at Echo Valley at South Meadows. We are improving the Rio Poco-McCarren intersection, and then we are proposing some Rio Poco traffic calming and safety improvements. Now, what's different from last time, what we're proposing now are kind of two alternatives for you tonight. After the Planning Commission Workshop we had last time, we went and had another neighborhood meeting, our third neighborhood meeting, and had several people from the Rio Poco neighborhood at that. They expressed a concern about Rio Poco and what we were doing there and expressed a desire to see a center turn lane so that traffic could, you know, get out of the way in order to make the turn. So we had this option one, was in the PUD originally, it increases the buffer on the roadway, buffers that bike lane on the top exhibit there. The lower one has the separated side lane and the parking and the median down the middle. What we're proposing as a second alternative, which we, we view as maybe a superior alternative, is this option two. This looks at basically taking that buffer, putting it in the middle for a center turn lane for that portion from basically McCarren to Sierra Madre, and then Sierra Madre to the project boundary. You effectively have the same cross-section here, but with the benefit of having the center turn lane. The median got a little smaller, the side lane got a little smaller, but ultimately, you get a better traffic flow with this alternative than the previous one. So we appreciated the public's comment, and we're able to employ that here. The development phasing has stayed the same. Our first phase is one A down here and then two A after that. So our goal is to really finish out that town center first. That's where we have a lot of our mixed neighborhood that we showed you on the development plan. Staff recommended putting in a requirement that we have. All the final maps recorded within twenty years, we're fine with that. That's very consistent with most recent approved PUDs. And now I want to spend as much time as I can on really how we crafted this PUD. So this PUD has really, we took the hard work that you guys spent years on the Reimagine Reno Master Plan and really tried to embody that in this PUD in a way where this is the development that you were hoping for that comes out of that master plan. So we have shared guiding principles. The guiding principles that are in Reimagine Reno are the same guiding principles that guide this PUD, even going down. So going through each and every one of the elements of the master plan, obviously, not all of them apply because we're not in the downtown or in the university district, but going through all of those that apply, I'm going to go through these slides. All of the policies that you see on here apply to Daybreak. A few of them I'll highlight. So in this one, regional initiatives and business retention and attraction. In the local economy, one of the projects that Edon is working on right now, which is talked about in, in these elements, is, is our housing issue, right? They're having a hard time attracting new businesses because we have such a, a poor housing market at this time with not enough product on the market. Looking at responsible and well-managed growth, we're in one of the growth tiers, one of the priorities that's in Reimagine Reno. We are a, basically a new development area that has existing infrastructure and services. We're that kind of large infill development with services right either through the property or at our front door. We've addressed parks and recreation facilities in the project. We've worked with the Washoe County School District. Sorry, I'm just highlighting these ones here, just, all of them apply, but I'm just wanting to highlight a few just obviously because of time. We're not a transit-oriented development. We don't have transit, but we're anticipating that transit could be incorporated in the future, and so we've incorporated a very walkable design into our PUD so that it would be transit-supportive in the future. We're utilizing Treated Affluent, not just on the south portion that is served by South Truckee Meadows Waaga Reclamation Facility, but worked with the county in order to have Treated Affluent on the entire project, but even more than that, working with them to upsize some of those purple pipes in the ground so that they can have a larger reach to the north of this project to other projects. So great opportunity to expand the use of Treated Affluent. Vibrant neighborhoods and centers, we have a number of different housing options. We obviously have talked quite a bit about the missing middle, which then plays into our affordable and workforce housing strategy that we shared earlier. Housing options in the project, neighborhood connections, we've got a very walkable, bikeable, connecting not only within our neighborhood, but connecting to the adjacent neighborhoods, which is a great thing to incorporate older and new neighborhoods together. We've got walkable centers and new neighborhood community centers. We've got multimodal hubs, and we have connectivity and access across and through our project. Well-connected city and region, we have balanced modes. Our roadway sections incorporate bike, pedestrian facilities into them, which is a complete street element, a complete street approach, which is part of the Complete Streets Master Plan. System capacity with the New Veterans Parkway, that basically system was built to have the capacity for this project. And then traffic calming and pedestrian safety goes hand-in-hand with safe routes to schools. Our schools are located on trail corridors. Transit-oriented, transit-supportive development, bikeways and supporting facilities. Some of the, sorry, some of this is like a little bit redundant. Fire and medical services, we shared that we're working with Reno Fire to meet their needs. Flood management, kind of twofold on this. We're mitigating our flood plain at a hundred and fifty, or a hundred and twenty-five percent of what's required. We're also reintroducing that north fork of Thomas Creek. So we're re-establishing a stream corridor, a historic stream corridor in this area, which is a great, planning into developments are supposed to incorporate park facilities. And then the impacts of new development, that thing, that policy there talks to Washoe County School District and planning schools with new development. So obviously, we've got an agreement in with them on the planning of those schools. Quality places and outdoor recreation opportunities, hydrologic resources, realigning Steamboat Creek, art and private development, we're encouraging that. Context-sensitive design, so basically, we have some lower height restrictions on some of our edges and, and really working to have a design that's in the context of the surrounding area. Water conservation and resiliency, we talked about that, Treated Affluent being used throughout the development. Effective government, so these, you might say, don't quite apply, but they do. Meaningful participation, we had a very robust public outreach. We worked really closely with the community to try and listen to them and see what their concerns were. The city is a convener. That's an interesting one, especially when it plays into this concept of our, our contribution to the land trust, that the city then is a convener between a private developer and a nonprofit entity to help address affordable housing issues throughout the community. Community, neighborhood centers and corridors, the overall mix of housing, compact centers. Signage, we heard from Scenic Nevada, they provided some comments, so we prohibited billboards, we prohibited digital signs to address their concerns. Complete streets, walls and fencing. This is a limited wall community, and what you'll see in the video at the end is, is that concept of not having backyard fences backing up to these, these public spaces, but rather having a very inclusive and open community. Traffic calming through roundabouts. Orientation to greenways, the Steamboat Creek corridor is a greenway on the other side of veterans from us. They have this nice new bike path, so we're orienting our pedestrian and bicycle facilities towards that. We're providing access to that greenway. Neighborhoods, general neighborhood policies, relationship to major roads, varied streetscape character, traffic calming, we already talked about, multimodal connections, pedestrian and bicycle safety. Getting over to, on the right side there, outer neighborhoods. This is, we are designated as an outer neighborhood. There are five criteria, we meet all five. And finally, in the growth and reinvestment framework, it talks about needing to address residential gaps and needs. Fifty-six percent of our product dedicated to the missing middle, and that mixed neighborhood really starts to address that. We have an appropriate mix of land uses, including commercial and a mix of residential. We have concurrent infrastructure and services for water, wastewater, reclaimed water, flood management, transportation, public safety, parks and schools. Finally, just to kind of wrap this up a little bit, the, this is, the benefits of this project, it is an infill development that does not require the extension of city services or utilities. It provides this much-needed housing supply for our growing economy, and not just that, but it's providing a very robust missing middle to create more attainably-priced houses in our market. That, the project by nature then is affordable by design because of our approach to this overall housing strategy. We're mitigating our flood plain, flood plain incap, impacts by one hundred and twenty-five percent. It is fiscally positive, and we're providing traffic calming and other streetscape beautification projects on Rio Poco offsite. So, challenge accepted.
You didn't turn blue at all during that.
I know. So we've got a little, so this is about three minutes, so I apologize. But this is, so all of that, how it gets encapsulated into the actual design of the community. So we've taken the time that we've had, you know, working through this process to continue to work and refine the design of this. And so what we want to share with you tonight is a three D simulation and video fly-through of that town center, that mixed, suburban mixed-use, and I'll narrate a little bit as we go through, if it comes up. There we go. Oh. I hear it. There we go. I'll back it up, sorry. So we're going to start out at the intersection of Echo Valley and South Meadows. And when you come into the site, you're going to see this initial, on the right side of this, a commercial node here. We've shared that it's, you know, it's a similar scale and concept to the South Creek project. You can see kind of some of that architecture emulated in here, that ranch-style architecture. You see the complete streets with the bike lanes and the multi-use path along the side. Now, as we start to get into the actual neighborhoods, you'll start to notice, this is front architecture onto the street. So on the left side, those are your townhouses, your townhomes, your row towns. On the right side here are these mansion towns that we looked at last time. So those are those three units in one building, but it comes at, you know, it basically presents itself to the street as a large, single-family house. The architecture is a diverse mix. We included a number of different styles in here, including some modern interpretations. We included a number of different styles in here, including some modern interpretations in order to have a more eclectic feel to the, to the overall build-out of this project. So this is looking at some of those little bit higher-density row townhouses here, more modern architecture. What we heard from the commission last time also during the workshop was in these higher-density areas, we really need to have open space. And some of these single fam, the larger single-family detached lots have backyards and maybe they don't have the need or propensity for a park facility. So what we have programmed in here near where, you know, we had a little neighborhood commercial node on this side, is this larger park element that now becomes this civic hub next to the other neighborhood commercial that's across the street, which is now kind of we're turning and looking at to the left side there. The roundabout in the middle is our traffic calming. We have included in the traffic calming for pedestrian safety that all these four-leg, four-lane round, four-leg, four-lane legs of the roundabout have to have pedestrian flashers. So a safer pedestrian environment than ultimately what's required. So now looking into, this is the town center commercial. Again, similar architecture, lots of outdoor spaces. We have requirements for gathering spaces and outdoor amenities as part of those commercial projects or, yeah, commercial parcels. So now heading down, we're heading towards Veterans Parkway. And you'll see the commercial on both sides of this street here. And as we get to the end, another example of some public gathering space with the farmer's market there on the corner. And as we turn here, we basically are introducing a little bit of a main street element with some angled parking on both sides that lead to the multifamily to the north here as we rise up. Multifamily to the north, connecting into that town center commercial. And then now looking, as we spin around and look to the south, connecting into those existing, those neighborhoods to the south of us. So this is the vision for Daybreak and we're happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Andy. You can take a breath now.
Thank you.
We'll let staff do a presentation as well. So Brooke, welcome.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Chair Johnson. I will not speak as quickly as Andy did. Brooke Oswald, Associate Planner for the record. Some bookkeeping things first off. In front of you, you have some proposed motions. After the staff report was distributed, we did, staff identified some conflicts within the motions. We updated the motions and then updated those to reflect the current staff report format and to put those in the similar format that the staff report is in. Additionally, yesterday, there was a memo update that went out. We had three, three items that we wanted to mainly clarify within the, or would recommend clarifying within the handbook. Those are, within the handbook, there was a statement that said only the master developer or its authorized agent or signee may initiate an amendment to the PUD. This is in conflict with NRS Statute 27A, which states that the city or county also has the ability to amend that handbook. And so we asked that that was included. And at, at the bottom there, as you can see, it says, except for modifications by the city as allowed by NRS 27A 410. Second, as Andy mentioned, and they are in agreement of this, we, we asked for a period of completion. We asked for a period of 20, or requested a period of 20 years. This, we look at completion as all final maps are recorded of all proposed phases. And then if those are not done within that 20-year time limit, the, if it's not completed, it can go before city council and be re-looked at and reassigned. There are NRS statutes that basically state that city council has to protect the current residents and future residents as that is more, moves forward and they make those decisions. This is from the handbook, but just wanted to show, they, they had a proposed development schedule. They are looking from 18 to 32, being if this, if and when it gets approved, but that, they have 15 years. Staff felt that 20 years was appropriate due to market conditions and mostly the size and scale of this project and what needs to happen. Last is a clarity, more of a clarity of process. Within the handbook, there are some major power lines that will need to be relocated. That relocation does require approval of a regional master plan amendment, a special use permit for major utilities and approval by MB Energy prior to relocation. So it was just clarifying the process that would need to happen as those are relocated and that time comes. Just quickly showing where those power lines are and how the proposal of how they could be relocated. Next, the following recommendations are within the staff report and I just wanted to clarify or give a little bit more information on those. Village parcels. These are a deviation from the typical Reno mapping process. You've heard these prior be referred to as superpads within the Stonegate Development. The applicant is proposing that they use the same method. This will allow for the expedited subdivision of land. It streamlines the process of approval that, and the opportunity to reduce the time required for residential development to occur and bringing houses to market. That being said, staff does have concerns, as they did with the Stonegate Development. And staff recommends that the, in the staff report, that the language within the staff report be added to the handbook to ensure that the city's process, resources and that are protected in that. It is, it is fairly lengthy. It, it, the main difference, they had a short section. We ask that much more language be included within this to clarify the process, how it happens, how it is reviewed. One of the larger discrepancies between the current handbook and what the language we represent is that they said that it could be reviewed administratively. Staff feels that this should be reviewed by the planning commission and within a public forum and then have the appeal process that happens through that. So you have a subdivision of land, subdivision of the superpads. Further, the subdivision of the superpads and then that submittal process for the master infrastructure improvements. Janelle Thomas, Senior Engineer is here tonight. She can speak more thoroughly of that process, the language that we've included and how it applies to the city. As Andy, Andy mentioned, they, they have their affordable housing approach. One is a donation. Within that, we are recommending a change to the language that that, the handbook states that that would be done at the close of each home. Staff felt that was complicated to keep track of, to develop and to do. And so we spoke with the applicant and requested that it happened at the tentative map of the village parcels. So that would be handled by the master developer. As they sold the properties, they would then make the donation to the trust at that point. Simplifies the process, also puts just the master developer in charge of that process. There will be an agreement for that. It's currently being worked on. They have a current proposal and it's being reviewed at this time. The second, as Andy said, is that they have, per the recommendations of the planning commission, that density has shifted and where they're concentrating that density of those 4,700 units has shifted. And they look to obtain those housings within that moderate income. That moderate income is defined by HUD as between that 80% and 120%. Andy was speaking to that 120% or the higher end of that. The elements in the PUD that also sort of encourage that attainability of housing is the multifamily, as mentioned. There is allowing of accessory dwelling units within the single family. They have eliminated the density caps in some development parcel, or some certain plan areas of the mixed neighborhood. They've allowed to establish residential uses could be established within those neighborhood commercial and arterial commercial PUD categories. There are minimum densities have been established. The handbook examples, a pose of the housing and as Andy showed in the last video presentation, the housing types that they're proposing and then that housing and density mix. This was a figure supplied in the staff report, but I think it's important to kind of look where we were and where from planning commission's recommendations where they have shifted the density of the development. And as Andy mentioned, that's, has been shifted really towards that high-density, single-family to a low-density, multifamily sort of position. That is roughly between 7 to 14 dwelling units per acre. But as you can see, from the May 16th planning commission meeting or workshop to today's, there is, they've gone from 24% to 56% of the housing is now provided within that, that higher-density group. And then, as you can see, the moderate density or that lower housing density has gone from 61% to 30% of the project. I think what's also important about this, especially looking at time, is, is when those will come on within the phasing of this development. This is a graph that they have provided within the handbook that proposes the different times that those will come on and the phases those will come on. So you can see within Phase 1 and Phase 2 is a large percentage of the multi, all of the multifamily, the mixed neighborhood, predominantly mixed neighborhood, the arterial commercial and the neighborhood commercial come on within those first two phases, creating that walkability, creating that density, hopefully in a, in a quicker nature, where the following phases are some of those outlined areas, which will be largely single-family. As Andy mentioned, fire service is working on agreement. Chief Cochrane is here tonight and can speak more to this. The, and they will enter into an agreement. They've been working on that diligently. And so per the staff report, staff recommends that the following language or is amended by that agreement and what that agreement looks like be included in the PUD handbook. This has been anticipated and the applicant has provided a small section that says this will be included at the time it's available. Currently, we're, staff proposes that there's an ambulance associated and by the 500 dwelling unit at the tentative map, an expansion of Fire Station 12 and a ladder truck to be So we did speak about the agreements that we'll have for the affordable housing and fire. There are two additional agreements that are currently being worked on. Those are the Washoe County School District. They have drafted an initial agreement, has been sent to the county. They have had discussions with them. I received an email confirming from the Washoe County School District that that was in review yesterday. The Parks and Recreation Agreement has been submitted. I sat down with our legal representation and the Parks and Rec representation and we reviewed the document. There were some concerns at this time. We have, staff has a scheduled meeting with the applicant next week to further discuss this and continue to work out how that will be agreed upon. You did also receive, there were additional comments from the Washoe County Health District. Those comments were received after the staff report was submitted. The main areas of the comments within that comment were the ambient air, air quality standards, transportation, providing of active choices of transportation, building efficiency, food deserts, multimodal infrastructure for schools or looking at walkability to schools and the location of where those schools will be and construction impacts. Many of these, if not all, were, have been addressed either through the handbook. The one that probably is biggest concern is the building efficiency or the one that sticks out is not being as well-covered. Modern, there are efficiency standards within our current architectural code, but they, they have not proposed an alternative, if that be Energy Star or LEED as proposed in the, And as Andy has proposed, that we, we haven't seen any changes in from the last time, that is the flood plains, the wet plains and the drainage ways. They, as mentioned, are currently working on that permit with the Army Corps of Engineers. The traffic has not changed except for the Rio Poco possible realignments or how that will happen, that mainly influenced by the last public meeting and the comments that were heard there. The wildlife interface, that would be the Virginia range and the feral horse population, that has not changed. The mercury, they do have an approved remediation plan. Natural and cultural resources, as Andy mentioned, they are additionally putting that requirement for additional signage throughout the trail systems. And then the services and utilities have not changed. With the staff recommendations, staff can make all the findings, applicable findings and recommends approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. Okay, before we start our part of this, this is a public hearing, so I do have a couple request-to-speak forms. Just a reminder, if you'd like to speak on this item, please see Michelle and have one of these forms filled out. Before I open that, I will ask for disclosures from the commission, starting with Commissioner Wieski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I visited the site and spoke with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Hawkins, as did I.
Commissioner Gower, as did I, in addition to receiving and reading the emails.
Commissioner Johnson, I visited the site, spoke with the applicant's representative and also read those emails.
Commissioner Griffith, I met with staff toward the site, met with the applicant's representative and the applicant, and I'm extremely familiar with the site because I was raised to right next door.
Commissioner Marshall, no disclosures.
Okay, so I'm going to open public comment and I'm going to start with Kimberly Rode Meyer.
Good evening. I hope you all know that affordable housing is only affordable the first time it sells, so keep that in mind. Good evening. My name is Kim Rode Meyer and I'm the Chair of the Upper Southeast Communities Coalition, a nonprofit 501(c)(3) to help protect flood plains and wetlands in Washoe County representing almost 2,000 stakeholders. While the coalition understands that previous planning commissions and city councils have mistakenly and despite a huge public outcry, approved a PUD handbook for the current project location for the Lennar Development, over a decade ago, a lot has been learned since 2006. And Reno now understands that flooding on Steamboat Creek is not included in the Truckee River Flood Project's area of flood control and that Steamboat Creek can flood more often than the Truckee River. This project area has been designated by the City of Reno, Washoe County, the Truckee River Flood Project and the Army Corps of Engineers as critical flood storage areas that benefit the entire Truckee Meadows and are vital for a successful flood project. It is the understanding of the coalition that the applicant borrowed flood management authorities hydraulic modeling for their analysis, which has now been replaced with a newer and more accurate model. Also very important, the hydrology that the applicant used is extremely outdated and did not include any Steamboat Creek flooding, at least that's what we had been told. It is the understanding of the coalition that the flood project will be submitting a new existing conditions map in the coming 12 months based on newer, more accurate hydrology. This will have the impact of raising the existing flood plain elevations under existing conditions and it could be by significant amounts. If master plan amendments and zoning map amendments are approved and this project is eventually approved, this could severely hamper the viability of the Truckee River Flood Project to be able to store floodwaters in the last location where that might be possible. Some additional information for you to know before consideration is the now-known issue of mercury and arsenic contamination in the Steamboat Creek flood plain. The city has been aware of this since 2010, yet our coalition still struggles to get this issue considered when development is proposed. For the safety of future reference, parts of the area of this project have been tested before by both Lennar and RTC for their projects. The Steamboat Creek flood plain is heavily contaminated with mercury to the point RTC needed special mitigation for their project. This applicant's mercury testing does not cover their whole project and is incomplete and inadequate. One particular point is there is no testing in or around the lake they plan to drain and put in houses. If any area could be a mercury sink, it is that one. Additionally, the mercury testing does not line up with the testing done by RTC. Before any consideration is made by this commission, applicant should be required to Before any consideration is made by this commission, applicant should be required to comprehensively retest and provide adequate public access to that testing. Since this area is critically important to be available for flood storage should the need arise, and is known by this body to be contaminated by high levels of mercury, the master plan amendment, the zoning map amendment, and the tentative PUD handbook should be denied. Thank you very much.
Next request I have is from Lori Ray.
Good evening, Commissioners, Lori Ray for Scenic Nevada. We sent a letter to the commission on the daybreak proposal in May regarding scenic issues, and since then, some of our concerns were addressed, as Andy let you know earlier in the presentation. So we appreciate that, but there are a couple of outstanding issues we'd like added, and we haven't talked to anybody about them because we just haven't gotten to it, but I'm asking you tonight, if you do recommend approval of this project, we'd like you to think about these additional issues. Basically, we've asked for strong sign controls, including no billboards, which we got, sensitive placement of cell phone towers in the event they are requested there in the future, and undergrounding of utility lines, which I think is what's happening as well. Sign controls are addressed in Sections five twelve. On page eighty-one of the handbook, and so looking at that, that's a good start, but there's still a way for, we think, for business owner to get a thirty-five-foot-tall sign in the development as the plans are written. There are two arterial commercial and four neighborhood commercial parcels. And the handbook says that the signs will conform to Reno's code unless it's prohibited in the handbook. So, in the city's code, arterial commercial zones have fewer sign restrictions than the neighborhood commercial. So arterial commercial allows up to thirty-five-foot pole signs while neighborhood commercial only allows monument signs up to twelve feet. The two proposed arterial commercial parcels front interior roads according to their map. I can't remember, it's in there somewhere. But anyways, we are requesting, so the two proposed arterial commercial parcels front interior roads, and so does that mean that pole signs will be allowed? You know, we can't tell. We are requesting you to require daybreak to limit all commercial signs to eight-foot monument signs to prevent tall illuminated signs from obstructing views during the day and interfering with dark skies at night. From the video, it didn't look like they were gonna, they didn't show any tall signs, but I think it should be in the handbook. The handbook addresses monument signs but only on South Meadows Parkway, and we think the handbook should make it clear that Section Five, in Section five twelve, that commercial signs are restricted to monument styles of up to eight feet throughout the project. Scenic Nevada believes that to help preserve scenic qualities, cell phone towers should be camouflaged and only allowed on commercial parcels prohibiting them from parks. Looks like they're prohibited from greenways and open spaces because it's not among the permitted uses. So we're assuming they're not allowed there, but it doesn't say anything about parks and we're concerned about that. So preserving scenic beauty adds to the quality of life for all of us, which tends to foster civic pride in a more harmonious community. Our concerns directly affect the scenic vistas that are prized by the residents who live there and those who drive through. We know that a development of this size will dramatically change the scenic character that exists, and we sympathize with the residents and understand what they're saying about the flooding. We hope you listen to their concerns. But we know, sorry, I had one less line. So our comments are meant to help preserve the scenic attributes that remain once the home and businesses are built if this project is approved. Thank you.
Thank you. I do not have any other request-to-speak form on this item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to make a comment? You'll have three minutes. Please state your name, and when you're done, see Michelle to fill out one of these forms. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, my name is Mike Trudell. For the record, my address is forty-three ninety San Gabriel Drive, so I'm in the Donner Springs subdivision. By way of background, I was a former city planner, nineteen eighty-six to nineteen eighty-eight, worked for Turnfitt and Haff and Associates from nineteen eighty-eight to nineteen ninety. I was the general manager of the Collin Ranch Homeowners Association from nineteen ninety to two thousand and ten. So I, having implemented a major master plan community, I applaud this developer for having come forth with this kind of application. I strongly support this kind of development in that knowing what's going where from the beginning is extremely helpful. And you don't have some of the transportation issues that existed prior to the Southeast Connector, and I think that RTC's helped this project immensely in resolving some traffic mitigation issues. I really like the idea of the homeowners association, that's what I've been doing for the past thirty years, is managing homeowners association. They're very responsible, take over the management aspects for the common areas, the pathways and things like that, takes that away from the city. So I would recommend support. Thought I had applied through the internet to speak tonight, but I will provide the application, or whatever you call it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any additional requests to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment. There is a lot here. I know we've got a lot of questions, so I would actually, since we've been here for two hours, I would like to take a ten-minute break before we jump into our questions, just to give us a chance to prepare ourselves and be totally ready. So with that, I'm gonna adjourn us briefly until eight-ten, where we will reconvene and start questions. So, thank you. Michelle, are we all ready to go?
Yes, we can go.
Okay, we will bring this meeting back to order, and we will move on into commissioners' questions. Before we get going, I would just like to remind the commissioners that, as was pointed out by both the applicant and staff, this is the second time that we've heard this, so the first time it came So the first time it came through, there were a number of items that we discussed in depth. So if you still have questions on those, obviously, please ask them. But we have gone over a lot of that. And then I would also like to point out, as Brooke did, we do have two aspects to what we're looking at tonight. One is the master plan amendment, which we will have a separate motion on from the motion for the zoning map amendment and tentative approval of the handbook. So based on the information that's both in our staff report and here, we have a number of findings that have to be made. So we also want to make sure that we are asking a lot of questions in order to help us either make or not make those findings. So with that bit of housekeeping, I will now see who wants to begin with the questions. That would be Commissioner Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Andy? Within the last day, we received an email from the District Health Department indicating they wanted to see this project done better than best. Can you explain that to us, please?
Yeah, in reading through their letter, as Brooke stated, I mean, a number of the items that are in there are really addressed in the PUD already. So whether it was alternative modes and different types of transportation, we have a very, you know, as I stated a lot during my presentation, we have a, you know, our roadway standards, our trail network, all are very robust standards such that it really does facilitate alternative modes like pedestrian and bicycle traffic. We did set it up and worked with RTC. It was one of kind of the original letters that we got from RTC was expressing a desire to see the ability to have transit in there in the future. Obviously, RTC doesn't have transit in that area right now, but we have a very transit-supported design. It takes a critical mass to really attract transit to this area. And so we did include some transit elements, if you will, kind of setting aside right of way for bus shelters and bus pads and that and the like into the development. So we really have addressed those multiple multimodal aspects that are mentioned in the letter. They mentioned safe routes to schools effectively. Our school site is located on our roadway, which has a trail network next to it, as well as next to open space, which has a trail network. So different pathways to the school. They mention construction, you know, kind of during construction, limiting exhaust and things like that. As we shared with you during the workshop, we have two aggregate pits onsite. The benefit to the development is that we are generating our fill onsite. The benefit to the community at large is that those truck trips are not making long-haul trips in order to bring fill material in. It's being generated onsite. So that's cutting down on ultimately construction vehicle miles traveled, which is going to be a reduction in overall pollution that they're talking about. So, you know, kind of whether, either way you looked at it, we were addressing a lot of, if not all, of what was in that health department air quality letter already.
My biggest concern was where they indicate they didn't want type zero and type one diesel emitting trucks versus type two and type three. Is that correct?
I think that's what they said in the letter, but that gets into a very high level of detail into the actual construction methods. Again, on a kind of macro level, looking at the construction activities that are going on here, we actually have the opportunity here to reduce the amount of equipment that's coming through, those big diesel trucks, things like that. So those are all benefits.
Thanks.
Mr. Wyinski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Andy, before you go too far, when you had your development plan up on the screen and you were talking about the different types of development, residential developments that are proposed here. As we know, as time goes on, things change. And you have a couple of decades of build-out proposed ahead of you when, once final approvals, if final approvals are given, to start that. What happens to your infrastructure when your product type changes over the years?
The infrastructure is planned, so by way of infrastructure, I'm going to interpret that to be either roadway or sewer water.
Underground mostly, so sewer water.
So, for example, so really, the Daybreak Handbook is set up to have an overall residential cap of forty-seven hundred units, right? That's our cap. That's what we've based all of our studies on. So whether it's traffic or sewer or water, it's all based on that. So whether or not the product types change, the overall number is not going to stay the same. So maybe there's some marginal, you know, differences, but in the grand scheme of things, it's not going to be that substantial to where we'd be concerned. If anything, I mean, if we get more dense, which we have with this, you know, from the workshop to now, right? We've kind of densified, for lack of a better term. You know, higher density has lower usage of water, right? It's, you know, you don't have the big yard areas. You don't have usually as big of a space of many bathrooms, things like that. So we're getting more efficient, if you will, on that. So kind of a multi-pronged way to hedge against that in the future.
Okay, so basically, there's a cap, though, on the overall build-out number, which is what city staff will be using for calculations for fixture counts and flows and drainage.
Correct.
All those types of things.
Yep, correct.
Okay. Something that you and I spoke about when we were talking about this in the last day was Rio Poco and the traffic on it. And I liked, and I would like to see the options again that you had up on the screen, if you could put them back up there. One of the questions that I had for you is, although Rio Poco is designed for more traffic than what it currently carries, what is being done to keep this development from using Rio Poco as its main service road?
Sure, so a couple parts to that. Maybe I'll address the how are we using Rio Poco? So Rio Poco is being extended. It basically dead-ends into the site right now. As we've stated before, Rio Poco is a very wide street. It could accommodate upwards of four lanes. We're not proposing four lanes. We're keeping it at two lanes and improving those two lanes to be more effective and to create other elements to the street that makes it more livable for those existing residents on Rio Poco. What we have in the phasing plan is that that first Phase 1B is really pretty small. It's just the first three villages on that side. Basically, that's the threshold. And you'll see in the phasing, it effectively extends Rio Poco into the site. So those first three phases will start to use Rio Poco. Once we get in, once we get past that first phase, we've got to extend to veterans. Once we extend to veterans, I think we're all seeing right now, Veterans is a fantastic roadway. It's a great new asset to that whole east side of the valley. And the traffic will continue to grow on Veterans in a way that that will attract those trips that way. So we're anticipating, you know, we're going to get people from the Rio Poco area coming through Daybreak just the same way that you'd get cross-traffic. So all of that, to, in our opinion, and I believe in the opinion of Reimaginarino, is a benefit, right? That is connecting communities. That's connecting the existing infrastructure with the new infrastructure, existing neighborhoods with new neighborhoods. So that's all part of that community, well-connected community element of Reimaginarino. So getting into the alternatives, then, the one that's on the screen now. So that is what was originally proposed in the PUD. So effectively, the first section there on the top is from, we'll call it McCarran. It's from Snowshoe Lane, but basically that's McCarran. That's the first intersection to Sierra Madre. So it's a couple blocks in from McCarran. Along that segment, there are, that's the only block where you've got homes on both sides of the street. And so what we had proposed there was basically two travel lanes in the middle, bike lanes next to that, a striped buffer next to the on-street parking. So the benefit is, you know, you get a little safer bike facility in that. You also get the opportunity for folks to be, you know, have more room to back out of their garages and get in the flow of traffic. The next segment in this alternative is from Sierra Madre, basically to our project boundary. In this one, we shift the travel lanes to the south side of the road. So you still have two travel lanes. We then build in a eight-foot landscaped median that separates out a side lane, kind of a little frontage road for those homes, because in through this segment, we only have homes on one side of the street. And so these folks that live adjacent to that, they basically have their own little private side lane to get into their homes to get to their on-street parking. Very, very safe environment for them on that side. So that's the first alternative. And then the second alternative really was born out of the neighborhood meeting we had May thirtieth. When we had the workshop with you guys on May sixteenth, we had already scheduled the neighborhood meeting. The intent was, we anticipated there would be some comments and maybe some modifications. So we wanted the opportunity to report back to the public. At that meeting, had, you know, a little less than maybe twenty people there, the majority of which were from the Rio Poco neighborhood, and they expressed concerns about, you know, increasing traffic and making sure that the improvements were going to make it better for them. And so one of the alternatives that they brought up was really wanting to have a center turn lane throughout the entire length. They wanted the ability to have, you know, traffic to pull on, into that center turn lane to make left turn so it didn't impede the flow of traffic. As we looked at it, Lauren Chilson's here. You can comment to this as well. We like this alternative. We think it's a good alternative. It does get a better flow of traffic. You still have bike lanes on the north part. The south part, we are kind of, I don't want to say sacrificing the bike lanes, but there are no bike lanes. This would be, I believe, signed for a twenty-five mile an hour street. So bicyclists in this southern, I don't know, using the mouse, in this southern area would be in a share-o, so in a shared lane aspect. Or there is the side lane next to it. So if you felt more comfortable being out of the flow of traffic, you do have that wide fourteen-foot side lane. If you wanted to ride in, that's going to be a very, very low-volume side lane and could serve the bicycle, traveling cyclists as well.
Okay. Whose responsibility to ma, is it to maintain the medians? If there, if that option is selected?
So in both options, we have the landscape median. In both options, the homeowners association for Daybreak maintains them.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Additional questions? We've, on some traffic questions here. So if anybody's got additional traffic questions on that, okay? Other items? Mr. Gower?
Ollie Elsis. Andy, two, two different topics, but I think they're interrelated in a way. The first one is related to the affordable housing piece. Could you spend just maybe another minute or two kind of walking us through the two pieces that you talked about in your presentation? The affordable by design component? And why that is hitting that hundred and twenty percent AMI? And then the contribution, the five hundred dollar per unit contribution? And how that works?
Sure. So first, you know, what we kind of coined here, affordability by design. So what I believe is, you know, kind of a hypothesis in the Reimaginarino, which is, you know, sort of stems from the housing study that was completed in two thousand and sixteen for Reimaginarino, is that, you know, we have this giant gap in our housing market where we don't have high-density single-family and low-density multifamily. So we've got tons of six thousand square foot lots on single-family detached lots. We've, you know, we're getting more and more multifamily to backfill kind of a, you know, decades worth of no construction, virtually no construction in multifamily. So you're getting kind of the bookends that are being dealt with, but nothing in the middle. And that middle portion is really important to the overall health of the housing market because that then, you know, especially now with house prices where they are, that is your first-time home buyer, your small family starter home, your move-down market for, you know, seniors that are looking to move into a smaller space and be able to maybe capitalize on the gains on their home and invest into, you know, something smaller. So it is sort of affordable by design because it's density, because you have multiple, you know, units in a building. We're talking about, you know, duets, you know, duets duplexes, you know, four and six units in townhome-type configuration. So we looked at this, working with staff on kind of, you know, brainstorming through this. And really, it sort of panned out when we put, you know, pencil to paper and looked at the actual calculations for how this works. And so the example that we give on the screen takes that HUD two thousand and eighteen home income limits for our area. And you have to then, you know, extrapolate that out to a hundred and twenty percent because it's intended for, you know, lower-income people. So we extrapolate that out. And like I said before, it's sort of a matrix of numbers. It's not a number that makes up the median income in our area. It's based on household size. And so looking at the types of products that these are, they're generally smaller units. And so it's safe to assume that these are probably smaller families or smaller, I guess maybe households is even a better term, of three to five people. So a hundred and twenty percent of AMI for three to five people is a range of seventy-nine thousand to ninety-five thousand dollars of annual income. We assume then the kind of federal standard of thirty percent of that income goes towards housing. Plug that into basically a mortgage calculator that factors in taxes and PMI and, you know, all of those factors that would go towards your kind of mortgage payment, if you will, kind of all-inclusive mortgage payment. And that works out to a general price range of three hundred and thirty to four hundred thousand dollars, purchase, basically purchasing power of what that would be. So looking at that range of numbers, looking at the market we have now and kind of what we're anticipating for these types of products, that's in that ballpark. So that's how we're getting to. It's, it is kind of affordability by design. You're getting, you see this in other markets. It's a little, you know, new in Reno sparks. We don't have a ton of that missing middle product. And so this is the answer to that affordability and workforce housing issue that's contemplated in Reimaginarino. And so what that looks like then as an overall strategy for affordability is, you know, we have the multifamily. We're, you know, there's still going to be a need for that, even with the thousands of units that are coming on. Even in the southeast area, there's still going to be probably a need for additional multifamily units. So we have some of that. That missing middle product makes up the bulk of our affordability strategy there with fifty-six percent of our homes are dedicated towards that. And as I, and I apologize, I did go fast. As I stated in there, we did kind of set in a guarantee of sorts where that missing middle product that you're looking for now has a minimum density incorporated into it so that as tentative maps come forward, you have something to judge against it to say, yes, that fits in with that range and it's appropriate and we are getting that product type that we were hoping for. And then finally, the third one is this City of Reno Land Trust. It's this concept that's coming out of council. And so what we worked on with staff is, really, there's not a funding mechanism associated with the land trust right now. So what if we could contribute upwards of two-point-three-five million dollars, which works out to five hundred dollars per unit, to the land trust? That money then goes towards investment in affordable housing in a different, in many different ways. And so what we worked out with staff also was kind of the mechanism for when it's paid, that would be paid at the time of sale for an individually, you know, an individual village when it's tentative mapped. So it's kind of, you know, in bigger chunks coming into the land trust rather than, you know, staff having to track it on individual home closings. So we thought that was totally appropriate.
So the piece, the assurance piece, because the, there's, are, the way we, I guess, as planners have been trained to think about affordable housing is some sort of regulatory mechanism, right? That's applied to the housing product that provides that assurance to a future home buyer that the product that they're purchasing is going to be within that, that a certain range, hundred and twenty percent, whatever it is. But what you're saying with this affordable by design is that the minimum density requirement that's built into the PUD is essentially going to replace that, that regulatory mechanism and provide that assurance by having that product available?
Correct, yeah. So effectively, your regulatory mechanism that you quoted there is that minimum density, right? Effectively, it becomes that minimum density. So it is forcing that housing product towards a higher-density housing product, which then by virtue is a lower price point.
Okay. So the next piece that I have a question about is the two-point-three-five million or the five hundred per unit. So it's an interesting concept. it's an interesting concept and my, my question about it is we have a finding related to this development. And I think Greg is going to chime in on this, but here's my question about it is that we've got a, an amount of money coming out of this development and it's going into a land trust, which I think is, is great. I mean, we see that in other examples with land trusts for, you know, environmental preservation, things like that for affordability. But what is the, the nexus, as our attorney said earlier, between the money that's being taken out of this development and put into the trust? That the affordability of those units, there's going to be some sort of built in affordability for the people who are interested in living in that, that development. So you understand where I'm coming from. There's kind of a disconnect there spatially in the region, I guess.
So the, the mechanism for, for that contribution is effectively it's a charitable contribution. So we have submitted to staff a charitable contribution agreement for that affordable housing. And basically this, you know, stipulates in there that the money should be used towards affordable housing specifically. Obviously the details of that, we are, you know, we've, we're working on with staff. But as far as nexus goes, you know, the nexus is housing, I guess, you know, very broad sense, because, you know, we're developing quite a bit of housing at the, sort of that median and attainable. More so than I think you've ever seen in a project of this nature. But at the same time, you know, there's a greater need and it's, it's demonstrated in that kind of original infographic that I showed. And what we talked about at the, at the last meeting we had is, you know, we're getting such a compression in our housing market to where, you know, there isn't that affordable option. And so you're getting sort of this, this, you know, downward pressure through the housing market that's pushing people that maybe would typically be, you know, in a starter home into multifamily and then on down to where, you know, we're seeing, you know, our motel, you know, the weekly motels and, and even our homeless shelters are at capacity because that really low income affordable housing product, you know, isn't available. And so that's, I think, you know, part of that nexus, maybe. The other part of it is, you know, talking with staff, you know, very low or low income affordable housing might not be appropriate in this location. You know, locationally, yes, we, you know, it is an infill location, but we don't have available transit right now. We don't have a lot of, you know, those services as far as, you know, VA and, you know, different things like that that are in close proximity that maybe that money then could be used to develop better locational affordable housing in, in those areas. Or, you know, as we, you know, I threw out the example too, it could also go, go towards, you know, helping to, you know, fight gentrification in certain areas if that were an issue. To, you know, there's, there's, one of the examples I looked at for this housing trust is, is in Atlanta. And one of the things that jumped out to me was, you know, they're investing in areas that are, you know, kind of these hip gentrifying areas, kind of similar to what we saw in midtown. And wouldn't it be cool if you had the opportunity to go in and buy up units in order to stabilize some of those neighborhoods for the people that are living there now? Rather than having them be forced out in a few years. So it gives a lot more flexibility to spend the money where it's most needed, I guess.
Okay. And I want to follow up with a question to staff on that. Brooke. Why $500s?
Good question. And I probably might defer to legal on that. We looked at, at sort of a reasonable number and how that impact was one to the, to the workforce that was there or the potential workforce. And as Andy said, that extrapolating that out to those areas that could be done. The $500 was proposed by the applicant. To find that nexus there, I think I would, would talk, defer to Greg on that.
Greg Salter, Deputy City Attorney. I'm, I'm working on the, on the land trust concept for the city. Bill Thomas was going to be here to tell you a little bit about it, but he couldn't be here. So, so I get to do this. We don't know yet whether or not the city is going to create its own land trust or whether or not we're going to use an outside source. Right now we're negotiating with a, with the Community Housing Land Trust LLC. And we may be using them, but the, the concept is this, the idea with the, the money being contributed, the money assures affordable housing forever. Because what happens is like the land trust, one of the typical models for the land trust is we'll go out, we'll take this money and we will buy vacant lots. I understand there might be some vacant lots available in the daybreak development. So maybe we'll go there, but we will buy vacant lots, the trust will buy vacant lots and own them forever. It will do a land lease to an individual who wants to come and build a home on it. And the individual will pay for the home, get a mortgage, deed of trust, pay for the home. But he doesn't have to pay for the land because the trust will, will do a land lease for a dollar a year, some nominal, some nominal amount. And when the owner goes to sell the house, there's an agreement that the owner can only take so much equity out of the house. And then the new buyer doesn't have to pay for the land and the new buyer will pay, you know, for the house, but it'll be below market because the existing owner can only take out so much in equity. So that assures, that model assures it forever. The, the, the house will remain affordable. So we don't have the situation where it was pointed out that affordability is lost with the first sale. With these contributions, we can put them into a trust to make sure that the units stay affordable forever. We could also use the money to contribute to maybe some multifamily projects. But with that kind of money, that's probably not very efficient.
Okay. So that's exactly where I was going to go with my next question is why $500? Why not $200 or $1,000? I mean, is there some sort of analysis that's done, for instance, with 4,700 units? That there's going to be some sort of proportional benefit or proportional impact on the community in terms of affordability? And so the number should be set at a certain amount? Is it a percentage of the home price? I mean, why $500?
They came to us with that as an offer. You know, the, the, the concept is a part of, it's kind of a derivative of inclusionary zoning. And so instead of, of having the city say, we would like for you to devote 200 units to affordable housing, which goes away after the first sale, this was a much better deal. And the amount, they, they came to us and volunteered the amount and, and we're, yeah, we'd like a thousand a house, but I, I don't know if that'll work. This is voluntary. It's not, you know, we don't consider this to be an involuntary exaction. This is a voluntary contribution to affordable housing and that for which we appreciate.
And if I could, Mr. Chair, just to add a little bit more to that. One of the things that you have seen over the years in planned unit developments is again, a voluntary kind of set aside of units that are income restricted within particular properties or within the development. That is something that even though inclusionary zoning is enabled by state law, that we don't have an ordinance on. So everything that has been coming forward, Stonegate, for example, most recently was, even though it was income restricted, was also voluntary and not necessarily based on an exact number. This is something as part of the overall kind of package of affordability that the applicant has proposed as, as part of the daybreak package.
Thank you. So I'm going to transition into the next part of my question that's related to affordability and contributes to affordability. And it was mentioned in the Washoe County Health District memo. And Brooke alluded to it in his presentation when he referenced the memo and it's in Finding D. And it's related to the energy efficiency of the buildings. A component of long-term affordability is the cost of ownership. And energy efficiency is, contributes to lower costs, it's been found. So why isn't there a provision in here similar to like what we have in Somerset? Where the PUD is meeting more stringent energy efficient requirements? And two examples were given in the Washoe County letter Energy Star. And they reference 4,500 Energy Star houses were constructed in Las Vegas. But we have 29 in our area. And then you mentioned the lead neighborhood development. So why are those not components of this?
You know, our understanding of, I'm not familiar with the Energy Star. That's quoted in the, in the, you know, Energy Star appliances, yes, but not necessarily the whole home aspect. As far as lead goes, you know, I am a lead AP and my experience with lead is it ultimately is pretty expensive. And I think that's kind of counterproductive when we're talking about trying to make housing attainable and attainably priced. When we then, you know, push in other aspects that are going to drive up construction costs. That would be, or even, even worse, maybe just more regulatory costs that would be associated with lead. So we would shy away from that. I think our sense of the letter and how it's being addressed is really, you know, there are energy standards in, in code right now. They keep getting more restrictive. And Nevada has an energy code. Our UBC and IRC codes, which are coming in, new, new ones coming in, I believe next year, you know, have additional kind of every, it seems to be every, every few years, they get more and more restrictive. And so we don't have a clause in the PUD that sort of, you know, puts a, you know, stops us in time. So whenever these homes come in, they would be subject to the latest and greatest codes, building codes at that time. So we're not really dedicating towards a specific, that would be pretty unique. I haven't myself seen that in, in very many PUDs. But offering that, you know, we're providing a lot of those elements that you would see in like a lead ND neighborhood development through our site design, through our product mix, things like that. So checking a lot of boxes, but not all of them, I guess.
And I would agree that the development, I mean, as proposed, it does a great job of incorporating multimodal connectivity and the components, as you said, in terms of a site design perspective related to lead ND. But there was that building efficiency component in it. I mean, our findings specifically mentioned it, the energy efficiency of buildings, Finding D. So I mean, if it's code, if it's code, it's code. But I just wanted to bring that up as it relates to affordability also. Those are all my questions for the moment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Griffith.
Commissioner Griffith, for the record, Andy, while you're up there. I know that we talked about it yesterday and we also, I'll preface it, I know that we discussed it at the last presentation. But can you review since it came up in public comment, the mercury?
Sure.
And then where we've come as progress for the letter with NDP and that.
So this is a slide from our, our workshop on May 16th. So the, the exhibit you see on the screen, it's a little tough to see, but the, the darker lines are blue lines. The blue lines are all the areas that were tested for mercury. So the history with mercury, potential for mercury contamination in this area is Steamboat Creek itself carries the mercury downstream from Washoe Lake and, and associated with some old Comstock mining activities going back, you know, hundreds of years. And it's known that that can occur in the soil where Steamboat Creek water is used or was historically used to flood irrigate pastures. So we know that all of these areas in the blue were either, we knew they were irrigated or had the potential to be flood irrigated over time. So McGinnlea and Associates went out, they tested all of these areas. In those areas, they then took that back to the laboratory to check for any concentrations that came in above the regulated levels. There were four areas which are identified in the red. So those are each four acres. So there are four four acre sites. They went back out and tested those individual four acre grid sites to see how far down the, that mercury contamination went into the soil. So they went down every six inches to see how that, you know, how deep it was. In all cases, it was encapsulated in the top 18 inches of the soil. And so the remedial action plan that's been approved by the Nevada Department of Environmental Protection, who is the agency that is in charge of regulating that. The, the plan is that we during construction dig down to two feet, at least two feet, put that known contaminated soil to the side. And then ultimately that gets buried under two feet of clean material. Whether, whatever the final grade is, it's under two, at least two feet of, of clean material. So it's encapsulated in perpetuity. We knew this going in as a constraint. This was, the applicant has been, they're not new to this property. Their due diligence was several years in the making. This element especially is one that they paid considerable amount of attention to. So knowing this is a constraint going in, we were able to plan around it. So if you look at the three red areas on the north there, they're all in open space. So we're going to encapsulate that in open space. So you don't have to, you know, run the risk of it being touched in the future by, you know, somebody wanting to dig a pool in their backyard, for example. So in all cases, these are not located, will not be located under, under residential areas. That remedial action plan has another caveat to it where we go out, we do that grading work and then we have to send our testing crew back out to ensure compliance. So kind of a belt and suspenders approach to ensuring that that soil is encapsulated and doesn't become a threat to anybody.
Thank you. That's all for now.
Commissioner Wieski?
Thank you, Andy. Not yet. What can, let's talk about signs.
Okay.
Are we following along with special sign height requirements and sizes? Or are we using city of Reno ordinances?
Little bit of both. Let me get to that chapter. Hold on one sec. So this is the sign portion of, of the handbook or a portion of the sign portion of the handbook. As Ms. Ray stated, and we did, we met with CNA Nevada actually as one of our stakeholder meetings early on. And then after the workshop and their comments came in, we made a couple more modifications. So her concern was over the arterial commercial. And so I want to point out the table here. So this is a signage equivalency table. So what we do here is basically, we don't want to reinvent the wheel. You know, city code already has, you know, a series of regulations for signage and it doesn't make sense a lot of times to regurgitate that back into the PUD. So basically what we're saying here is it's appropriate for arterial commercial and neighborhood commercial land uses within daybreak to have neighborhood commercial sign standards per city of Reno code. So that's what you're getting here is this column is our land use designations within the PUD. And then these are the equivalent regulations in sign code. So maybe to, to bolster that a little bit, it would be more, you know, be appropriate to maybe add some column headers to that to say, daybreak land use, city of Reno sign regulation, just, just to make it clear. And we can, we can kind of hedge against her concerns of somebody coming in saying, well, I have arterial zoning and why don't I get arterial signage? So we can, we can nip that in the bud. We also, one of their concerns was the animated, using the mouse again, the animated signs and billboards which are prohibited. So that's your digital signs and your billboards are prohibited. So basically the NC standards and all, you know, I know CNA has a code there is effectively an eight foot monument sign that would be for all of our commercial.
Okay. And, and what happens in the future between now and final build out as RMC changes? Or, you know?
Sure.
How, how, how does that affect the PUD? Are you locked into what is current and existing today? Or does it get more, since you are, you know, borrowing code? Do you borrow the continuous adjustments to code?
Yes, we do. So if you look, the reference there is, is to RMC as it's amended. So as that section or the sections relevant to those sections, I guess I should say, are amended in the future, we would be amended with it.
Okay.
So if code were to get more restrictive, we would get more restrictive as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Christian Gower?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A question came up for a statement during public comment, I guess it was, related to flooding coordination with the Trekkie River Flood Project and using the latest data. Either Andy or staff, I was wondering if you could address whether that latest modeling from the flood project has been incorporated into this?
Janelle Thomas, Senior Civil Engineer, for the record. The hydrology report that was submitted with this particular application integrated the latest information that is available from the work that was done by RTC. They actually have a CLOMAR application that has been submitted with FEMA. And then since the completion of their project, a LOMAR, which is a letter of map provision, will be filed with FEMA in the coming weeks or months. And so that, that data, once it's received, will be incorporated into the hydrology report as it's been presented. Does that make sense?
It does. I understand that piece of it. So how does the, the flood project modeling work play into this? Do they need to consider that? Or is that just something that's sort of extraneous to this whole process that's good information? But tie those together for me.
So the, the RTC's CLOMAR application did contemplate all of the flood modeling that was done through the flood project. And so it all becomes integrated with, with each other. If you'd like further clarification, I know Steve Strickland is here from Wood Rogers, who actually has had an integral part in that particular design aspect.
And that's fine. I, it's the, I understand the, the data that went into it and the establishment of the mapping, but it sounds like there's another modeling effort going on going forward with the Southeast Connector in place that the flood project is working on and developing a new set of data. And I'm wondering how that would be evaluated. Maybe I'm completely misunderstanding this.
And I'm, I'm not certain that there is a current project that is being pursued by, by the flood project group. But any kind of updated studies would be integrated within each other, within this basin.
And that would be incorporated as this project moves forward into these phases? That would be rolled in?
Correct. Yeah, so when they bring in their development application, they're going to be updating with the most current flood information that's available. And it's going to incorporate all of their project impacts to that, to that flood basin.
Okay. Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Actually, I have a question for Brooke. Jump in here. One of the items in the, in the staff report talked about the amount, the access to thirty acres of parks based on the population that's going to be incorporated in the whole thing.
Correct.
Indicates we have an eleven-acre community park, three neighborhood pocket parks at a minimum, varying in three to five acres in size. That in and of itself doesn't get us to the thirty that's recommended. I see some additional things in here in terms of community spaces, and there was even some shown in the video, but I guess I'm concerned in a couple of ways. One, what's the, what's the mechanism, you know, fifteen years from now? When one of the final tentative maps is coming in? For somebody to determine that perhaps that tentative map can't work because the project is still short five acres worth of park?
Yeah, I see your concern. As, excuse me. Brooke Oswald, Associate Planner, for the record. As this comes in, we, as we did that analyzation, as you know, that's, it could be roughly twenty acres. The recommendation per the master plan is, for that population, would be approximately thirty acres. There are requirements within multifamily that will require that they provide a recreational space per our multifamily standards. There will also be the access to the open space and the improvement of those trails and those trailheads that I think need to be. It's hard to categorize that as an actual acre amount, but it, it does offer that recreational and that connectional opportunity. Additionally, the, the trail networks and some of that open space that's going to run down those, the, the potential floodplains and the wetland areas that will have trail signage and stuff like that. I think those need to be incorporated within to that recreational space. The guarantee of moving forward that we haven't met that five acres, I think we'll see that that will, will come as, as shown tonight. They are proposing some of the other public plazas within the, the commercial and arterial centers. That is part of the proposal and the guidelines for that development, which will also provide those gathering places within those commercial and arterial areas.
Okay, so then that brings up a question. Does a public, or does a plaza area within a commercial center count as a park or recreational space?
I believe how, that would be determined of how that is programmed and how that is functioned. As they've shown, they do have gathering spaces within those arterial spaces that would be programmed for either a farmer's market or potentially a concert or other sort of public operated programming. And I believe that would be, does provide that recreational opportunity for, for the residents of that area.
Okay. Everybody's jumping in here.
If I may add too, to this. So looking at the, you know, thirty-acre park as a minimum. So we do, we do have the eleven-acre community park. We have three additional neighborhood parks upwards of five acres. So we're at, you know, twenty-six acres of programmed park space. In addition to that, what's in the park element of our PUD? Are those community plazas as part of the commercial area? Additionally, you really can't look at the community park as a standalone, just the eleven acres. It's the eleven acres in conjunction with the hundred-and-twenty acres of passive open space next to it, and the hillsides and trails and trailhead elements that are part of that. When you look at the city's Parks Master Plan, for our community parks specifically, it says that they should be fifteen to fifty acres in size. It also says that they should have a myriad of improvements that could be, you know, your traditional kind of built-up parking elements, you know, tot lots and things like that, as well as large areas of passive open space. So we're kind of belt and suspender on the community park with the eleven acres of really high programmed amenitized space next to a hundred-and-twenty acres of passive open space with the trail network. And what we're talking about is, you know, that area there.
Right.
So the trail network going up to the vista points.
I'm going to jump in right now on that, because I, I totally appreciate that. And I understand that recreation is not just park space. And I, I get that there's other amenities that are here that certainly would fit into a recreational category. I guess my concern is, you know, from a technical standpoint, looking at the overall area, you mentioned that the multifamily, that has a requirement for it. I'm just wanting to make sure it came up significantly during the Ward Two NAB discussion and the Ward Three NAB discussion with some concern about it. And just knowing that what's technically presented in front of us, you know, open space, yes, it fits into the recreational, but it's not, it doesn't necessarily fall in, under the park category. Nor does anything that's in a commercial plaza that's not a park. So it's a recreational amenity. But if, if there is a requirement, and that's just what I want to, you know, I, I appreciate everything else that's out here, and I, I respect what that is. I just want to be clear, when we're saying and we're looking at, you know, both parks and recreation, that, you know, there is a defined component for park and that the city is okay with down the road calculating how all of this is going to come together. Because certainly, that open space with the trail network is a recreational amenity, but it's not necessarily a park in the sense of what the city's looking at.
And, and, and we would contend it is, right? Because it is, it's co-located there, it is part of that park system. And a great example of this would be the Huffaker Hills Open Space, right? The, which is just to the left of us here. In addition to that, I think it's Huffaker Park over, off of Offenhouser, over, you know, just to the, what is that, west of this project. It consists of, you know, kind of your traditional neighborhood park in addition to several trailheads that go up to the, the hillside. And that is a, as a collective, you know, set of amenities, the Huffaker Park.
And, and that is, I, I would agree with that in the sense that it is a collective amenity, but it's not being told as a park. I just don't want us to get to the point fifteen years from now. And, and I'm not saying this will happen. That's why I'm asking if there's a condition or a situation in place. Because it mentions that there's three to five, you know, there's a minimum of three neighborhood parks. Those can be, you know, they're not necessarily shown yet. I don't know, you know, looking at the overall context, again, does one of them end up in the Phase Four? You know, that's a pocket park over on the, the far east side of the development. I just want to make sure that there is enough information in place here and moving forward for staff that if the requirement is for looking at thirty acres of space, that we don't get to the buildout and we say, okay, we've built this main park and it's tied to the trail network, we're okay.
Yeah.
And so that's, I, I, I'm wanting to make sure that's a, you know, it's a major aspect of what we're doing from not, you know, the different types of parks.
You bet. I, I appreciate that. So I guess, little bit of apples and oranges, right? I, I'm sort of arguing for the fact that from an acreage standpoint, it's, it's quite a bit more than thirty acres, right? Hundred-and-twenty acre open space in conjunction with the other parks. The other parks, the other three parks, the neighborhood parks are required, right? There, so there's no way out of that other than developing those within these neighborhoods.
Okay. Thank you. And then, I'm sorry, Andy, before you sit down, just one more thing that, that, and actually not related to parks at all. The language that staff has indicated for the incorporation of the super pad concept that they have recommended to be placed into the PUD, do you have any issues with that?
No, I mean, in concept, we're fine with that. You know, we originally tried to provide maybe a more streamlined approach. That was more administrative, taking basically the parcel map process and allowing for consecutive parcel maps to occur. Staff had concerns with that and wanted those consecutive parcel maps to come to the planning commission. That's kind of the, the root of it, and we're, we're acceptable to that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commission, additional questions?
Mr. Marshall?
Brooke? I'm looking at the July eighteenth, twenty-eighteen memo from Claudia. Actually, from you, from Claudia. And at condition number two, the Daybreak Handbook, two-point-two. And there's this odd sentence, this has to do with phasing, but the sentence says, "This PUD shall be valid and enforceable for twenty years." And maybe, maybe it's my inexperience with PUDs, but I thought the PUD conditions basically last until the city decides to change them consistent with NRS. I don't think that's what you mean when you say it needs to be completed. The project needs to be completed in twenty years. Or the tentative maps have to come in within a certain time period. So I'm a little concerned that this language might jeopardize the... I don't know what happens in twenty years if, what happens on year twenty-one if this PUD shall be valid and enforceable for twenty years.
The intent and how this reads is that at that twenty years, if, if it is not completed, that, that allows city council to relook at it and deem what is appropriate at that time to do with that land? I believe your, your question is about the language and how it reads, that there could be confusion in that?
Yes.
And the confusion coming directly around the time period and NRS?
No, what I'm, what I'm talking about really is, there's lots of other things in a PUD aside from the schedule. And so this language says, it calls into question that, that the PUD rules only last for twenty years.
Correct. At that time, the city council has the opportunity to relook at that. So their rules, if they have not completed or recorded that final tentative map...
So if they've gotten ninety-five percent done?
And they do have the option, they can go in front of city council to edit that time. If they had ninety-five percent done, they could go and say, we would like to extend this time period to complete the last five percent. They do have the opportunity to do that at city council.
I think it would be valuable to make sure that this language is tied only to the phasing, not to the actual density requirements or any of the other requirements associated with the PUD for anything that's already been built out. Because it basically says that it's only valid for twenty years. And I don't think that's consistent with the intent here. But one can make an argument that in year twenty-one, the PUD goes away.
And you could change existing, existing, what has been built or what is going on at that time. NRS does state within NRS that, that city council cannot make any actions that would adversely affect current residents or the residents of the PUD. So I believe that does assure those residents or that developer at that time.
We can't interfere with vested rights. And so if, if a part of the, of the planned unit development has actually been built out, building permits have been issued, then the, the rights of the owners are vested. And so even if the rest of the PUD goes away, we still have to respect and honor the vested rights of the existing homeowners.
I agree with that. That's what makes the language troubling.
Okay.
We'll take a look at that. I hear you.
Additional questions?
No. Additional questions? Discussion, if there's no further questions. Who'd like to, who'd like to start us off?
Mr. Gower?
Mr. Chairman, I'll take a stab at it, just because I haven't had the opportunity to go first on discussion for such a long time.
I figured this, this is, you can just do this to your heart's content for the next couple of months.
Couple of months? I want to start out by saying that the last few dozen slides of Andy's presentation where he went through the compatibility of the project with the master plan, I thought was, was valuable to do in the sense that it really shows where the, the Daybreak PUD has tried to align with those goals and policies that we worked so hard to develop as a commission and as a city. And the fly-through at the very end kind of really brought all of that together in the sense that, you know, we saw a, a community that didn't have the, you know, the typical walled edges of it. You know, it was an open, permeable, walkable, you know, architecturally interesting, diverse type community. I think when we all worked through the master plan process, that was the type of community that we envisioned, or at least that I envisioned. And as Andy mentioned, it's in one of the outer areas. So having that type of development kind of on the urban fringe that's still in infill development in terms of the compatibility with the master plan, I think has really done a fantastic job. The two pieces for me that I was concerned about that I mentioned during questioning were the affordability component, and that was something that we talked about in our workshop. And I, I understand what's being proposed. I understand how it relates to affordability. I don't know if I'm a hundred percent on board with, with how it's being put together. And I understand that we're just kind of the first step, and then it goes to city council and, you know, things get reworked. I don't know if I would change anything at this point. I like the concept of the affordable by design and achieving that missing middle. I think that's a really important piece. And the, the team heard us at the, at our workshop in saying, when we asked the question, "Are we doing enough in terms of density?" I think they came back and really presented us with something that was higher density that met those housing needs. So the $500 piece, though, is, is interesting to me. And I know it's a new concept, and maybe it's just because it's different, that's why it's, seems kind of out of the ordinary. I would like to see some, a little more assurance related to energy efficiency built in there. Andy, you mentioned the green building and sustainable design component, and I, I totally get it from that lead ND, neighborhood development perspective with all the walkability and design components from that site perspective. But from that, that building perspective, if we're just relying on code, and maybe this is a question for staff, but are we just, if we're just relying on code, are we meeting that finding? And that, that question kind of remains for me. So other than those two issues, I thought all the questions for me were answered related to all the other findings. And like I said, in terms of a project that's, or, excuse me, a planned development that's consistent with the master plan, this is pretty darn close.
Thank you. Commissioner Wieski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to our staff. I think that was a great job done on this. To Andy and to all of his staff, a great job done also. And whoever decided to do the workshop with us as an open, long meeting, not a 15-minute presentation, was a wonderful thing. We got through a lot of detail in May, which made bringing an application before us much easier to dive into and look for the details. And to make sure that certain things were, you know, that are important to us, were really, you know, gone through with a fine-tooth comb and make sure that they were as right as they can be right now. My, my biggest concern, Andy, as we've talked, is, you know, the traffic into Rio Poco because they were there first, doesn't necessarily mean they get run over. And I think your staff has done a really good job in providing additional options and going back and talking to the community, taking their input, their ideas, and, and building it into something that really works. And along with the way that it opens up to the south, hopefully that, you know, before your, your commercial areas are built out, that not all the traffic from development will be on Rio Poco. Because that would, that would be close to failure in concept and, and build out traffic-wise. And that, that is not going to make for a safe neighborhood, and, and I don't think that's what any of us want as we're looking at this. We've looked at a lot of different details. And I have fellow Commissioner Gower concerns that you did, that, that you just spoke about that I, after tonight, I'm in line with. I appreciated the answers, affordable housing and that type of thing. Still amazes me to think, maybe I've, maybe I've just expected Reno to, you know, still be able to develop $140,000 homes to $200,000 homes. And when I look at $400,000 home as an entry-level home and a family making $80,000 a year, if they can put 10% away and they have to have 20% down so that they don't pay mortgage insurance, that's $8,000 a year. You know, that's 10 years of savings without having any family catastrophes. And if it's a young family, that's not going to happen. So to buy into this neighborhood, but at the same time, I get where, where the numbers are, you know, and I, I appreciate what's, what's being done. The $500 thing, I hope our, our city managers, assistant managers and legal staff find out if $500 is a token, if that's the bottom, or if that's the top, before they make a final decision and final acceptance. So, and maybe the development staff does the same research. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Additional comments? Commissioner Griffith?
Commissioner Griffith, I'll keep it short, just because I would like to echo what our fellow chairman said, or Commissioner said earlier. I also just wanted to make a note that it was really helpful to see all of the community engagement and involvement, particularly when we heard in public comment that scenic Nevada had been able to meet with you guys and that you guys made recommendations and changes in the PUD so that we could kind of get some assurances that you guys have been in communication. So that's a good thing to see. And I also like the creativity as somebody that sits on many housing boards and homelessness boards, that you guys were creative in trying to make a solution that's actually sustainable and not something that we heard that the first time you buy a house is affordable and later we're dealing with, we're just kicking a can down the road. So trying to find creative ways to help our community as a whole was really important to me as well. And I won't repeat what everybody else has already said.
Thank you. Additional comments?
I guess I'm going to weigh in with one. When I first started looking at this project, I had, I had some concerns. I had some concerns, the north end, Rio Poco, and what was going to happen there. I had some concerns on the south end, too, just because of the traffic that I see coming from there on a daily basis past my office. And then, and I, I'll be totally honest, when the southeast connector opened, the traffic that was going to Longley and McCarran, that was bawling everything up, has almost vanished. I can actually make a left turn out of my office at 5:10 that I could never do before. So I, 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 I see the impact of that. And so then I went this weekend, very specifically, to drive out in the area and look at that. And what came to mind as I got there was driving through two other planned unit developments, through Double Diamond and through Damone Ranch. And, you know, there's some good things and some bad things for those two, but it was very clear, it was very well laid out. The schools made sense with where they were, the, you know, the density and the lower density made sense. And when I was on the southeast connector and I looked to the west, and I thought to myself, "This area is going to get developed. This is a prime space. It connects to everything." And the PUD is the way to ensure that it's done in a way that works. It's done in a way that gives all of the city staff an opportunity to look at it and to ensure and to ask these questions, to be able to say, "We need to have more density in our housing. We need to have more options with that. We need to have a organized idea of where the, the higher density and the lower density is going to be and develop the traffic based on that." And so while I was initially apprehensive of kind of committing this amount of space to one PUD, driving around, hearing it, and then, and echoing even the questions that were coming up here, we have a, a entity that is actively working to address the mercury situation. It's not going to be done on a piecemeal basis. It's going to be looked at holistically through this whole area, reviewed by ND EP and approved under that requirement, which is, you know, what we would be asking for on an individual parcel basis if it wasn't through part of the PUD. So I'm seeing the benefits of this. Do I have some questions still? Certainly, but staff has done a great job of sort of identifying them and then also saying that they're going to continue to sort of make sure that the code requirements are in there. So I appreciate you all letting me ramble. There's nobody other, no other questions on that. We do have some revised motions that have been placed before us. So I would certainly entertain either additional discussion or an intervention by our city attorney.
Just a couple of quick changes to propose. On page 14, item 2.3, the schedule, where it talks about the $500, we need to add the language that it would be contributed to the city of Reno Housing Trust Fund or Designee, if that's okay. And then the only other one is on page 33, where we talk about the building of the 11-acre park. The agreement that we're negotiating right now has a different timeframe than what's in the handbook, and so we'd like to coordinate the handbook with the agreement, if that's okay.
Thank you, Greg. We'll see if there's any concerns with that moving forward. Appreciate that. Commissioners? I think both of those items make some sense. Legal's in favor of them, and I believe staff's in favor of them. So unless we have any concerns over the top of that, I would once again turn it back for either final discussion or a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gower.
I am pretty darn close to ready to make a motion, but I was curious. I didn't hear any sort of other feedback from the commission regarding finding D related to the energy efficiency of the buildings. And I'm wondering if the rest of the commission is comfortable with what's being proposed, or if there's something additional that needs to be added to better meet that finding.
Commissioner Johnson, I guess I'll weigh in on that first. I saw that, I had flagged that as well, under sustainability. The, the concern that, Andy mentioned it from a lead standpoint and from an energy efficiency standpoint, we're actually actively analyzing a couple of projects right now on, you know, the sustainable design criteria on an individual building basis as it relates to lead. And there is a very quick cutoff before it starts to have an impact on the cost of the project. And whether that's a, you know, and that's an initial cost. Life, you know, life cycle analysis, it pays, it more than pays itself back. I, I guess this is a situation where I'm almost looking at it again on the neighborhood level rather than on the individual building level. I believe that codes are getting tighter. If they're tied to building code for the buildings that they're doing, the international energy code is, the new one's going to be adopted and it's more stringent than the current code. So that's going to have enough of an impact on the cost of the building that we're doing, but it is going to be meeting that level, higher level of energy efficiency within the buildings. I would be hesitant in light of your other conversation about affordability of putting too much more onto the top of the current requirement, just because I think then we're going to start to have competition. So I guess I'm, I'm going back to that finding D and looking at it more as they're going to meet code and the proposed development here is by its very nature more inherently sustainable than on a parcel-by-parcel basis. So that's, that's my response to how I'm, I'm looking at that finding with respect to the overall PUD.
And I appreciate that, Commissioner Johnson, and your experience dealing with building envelopes versus mine dealing with sites. So, you know, I respect that. Maybe the applicant would be interested in contributing in the vein of affordability to a housing retrofit pot that would improve the affordability of existing homes in the region. I'll just throw that out there for City Council to chew on.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Wieski.
One of the things I noticed within our industry is that, and currently, our building department is getting ready to adopt new codes. But with a lot of the changes that take place in building materials and building styles, much like our municipal codes and our, our municipal codes are changed and modified during the years, instead of waiting every five years to do something. Energy code is something that is, seems to be modified and changed regularly. So I'm comfortable leaving it the way it is, knowing how our industry kind of governs itself through outside industries, trying to get us to use less energy all the time.
Part of your expertise. All right.
Mr. Gower.
Okay, I'm ready to make a motion. In the, I got a bug on my screen, sorry. In the case of LDC 18-00025 and LDC 18-00037, no, excuse me. We need to do the master plan amendment first, correct? Are we splitting these up?
Believe it.
Yeah, because there's different voting requirements. So let's do the master plan by itself.
I'll start with the master plan and I'll stick to the, the paper script here. In the case of LDC 18-00025 Daybreak Master Plan Amendment, I move to adopt the master plan amendment by resolution number 09-17 and recommend that City Council approve the master plan amendment because it meets all applicable statutory and code requirements subject to conformance by the regional planning agency.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wieski.
I will second that if Commissioner Gower will respond to the additional changes requested by legal and by staff tonight in documents.
Thank you. Commissioner Gower, I do include the additional recommendations in the July 18th memo that we received and those presented this evening. Am I missing something?
If I could, Mr. Chair, for the record, CNN read, it would be good to articulate the changes being integrated into, or recommend it as part of the handbook, as part of that motion. So if we could go ahead and do the master plan amendment, given it doesn't include those changes, then we could move on and do the zoning map amendment tentative handbook and then kind of maybe just do a double check. I do have one suggested change to the memo as well, so I want to make sure that that gets in there as well.
Okay. So the motion for the master plan amendment, as stated, is sufficient then?
I believe so.
Notting heads.
That's what I'm seeing. Okay.
Commissioner Wieski, I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the master plan amendment. All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot to ask for discussion, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Yes.
I want to echo most of what everyone has said about the general intent, but, and the effort that has been put forth. However, I cannot be supportive of the motion, particularly for finding L for a number of reasons, and I'd like to articulate those. We are moving ahead with this master plan and PUD prior to four critical agreements, one of them which is the agreement that has to do with the addressing, in substantial part, the affordable housing notion. So we don't know what that's going to look like, and I don't think I can support this without those agreements, all those agreements in place. I also find it troubling that we are not following staff's preference for affordable, for having affordable housing on site and instead adopting a NIMBY-esque in lieu, basically an in lieu fee for a land trust. I like the concept. My mother is putting her house into a land trust that was described, so I'm very intimately familiar with them. They work great, but they also have issues about, they don't address the social issues of combining that kind of housing within the program or within the PUDs that we're approving. I also find somewhat misleading the notion that we're going to get the amount of the actual types of housing that could be seen as not just 120. I think you should redo your, your number, so you're going for the missing middle, which is the 80 to 120. And that's because staff recognized most of the multifamily can be built out as single family under the density requirements. There's no linkage to actually requiring multifamily except for the 700. I have some concerns about the hydrology on the modeling as opposed to I have some concerns about the hydrology on the modeling as opposed to the LOMAR and the CLOMAR data that's being used, but we didn't really get a whole lot of stuff associated with that. So my underlying fear is that this development, while the best intention of the master developer is to look like the fly-through, there's actually no guarantee that it's going to look like that. And in particular, the distribution of the housing, and it will tend to be skewed towards the highest price that a developer can get. And that probably is more on the single-family than the multifamily, which tend to drive the lower prices. So with that, I will not be able to make the necessary findings to support the motion. Thank you.
So Commissioner Marshall, just as a point of clarification, the finding L that you spoke of, that you cannot make, is, that's based on the zoning map amendment and tentative map? The motion that's before us right now is for the master plan amendment. So I just want to be clear that your, I just want to make sure that we're talking about the same motion and your concerns.
Yeah, I think the same findings apply to the adherence to the goals and policies of the master plan, which would be finding four.
Okay.
For the motion for the master plan amendment.
Thank you for that clarification. Additional comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Commissioner Marshall is opposed. Motion passes five votes to one. So now we're looking for motion on the zoning map amendment and tentative approval of handbook. And as Sienna pointed out, any motion that's made on this should take into account both the items that were raised this evening as requested changes, as well as the memorandum of July eighteenth.
And if I could, Mr. Chair, just to elaborate, there was a concern raised about the second sentence of the memorandum under number two, and potentially invalidating the overall zoning provisions of the PUD. So staff is going to request that that second sentence be stricken, but kind of the first sentence expanded, so the development and build-out of Daybreak ultimately be dependent on market conditions, and this PUD shall have a twenty-year completion timeframe. So with that, that would kind of clarify our recommended changes to the memo. There's a variety of recommended changes in the staff report that we've discussed fully, and then also recommended changes that have been put on record by legal counsel. And I believe that those are all the changes that would need to be worked into the handbook.
Okay. With that, commissioners, I think Sienna's laid it all out, so I guess you can do a motion that says per Sienna.
Per Sienna. Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion on the zoning map.
Commissioner Gower.
In the case of LDC eighteen dash zero 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 three seven Daybreak Plan Unit Development, Zoning Map Amendment, and tentative approval of the handbook, based upon compliance with the applicable findings and with the clarifications that were provided and the assurances during discussion regarding finding D, which is the energy efficiency, and the evolving nature that I have confidence in regarding L for affordable housing that our staff and city council are going to work out, I move to recommend that the city council adopt by ordinance the zoning map amendment as requested in the staff report and tentatively approve the proposed handbook by minute order subject to conditions, including everything that was presented and summarized by Sienna, effective only upon a determination of conformance by Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Commission.
Just verify with legal, did we get everything? Okay. The motion included everything that staff and legal was looking for, so thank you. So I have a motion. I have a second.
Commissioner Wieske, second.
I have a motion and a second. Additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries five to one. Commissioner Marshall is the nay. Okay. Thank you. Okay. We are going to move on. Actually, I'm going to take a brief second, because I know everybody that's sitting out there is probably not here to listen to the Truckee Meadows Regional Liaison Planning Report. So it's possible, but that's what I'm going to move on to now. So additional discussions, please take them outside, and we're going to continue with our meeting here. So, okay. Next item is the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. Turn your mic on.
Hot topic. Our old chair, Gower, is now the chair of the TMRPA, voted in last night unanimously. We did meet for a regional plan conformance review for the City of Reno Master Plan Amendment for Mountain View Mixed Residential. That was unanimously approved, as well as four-eight-five-five Echo Avenue. That's where we converted that into industrial space from office. So those were all done unanimous, and our next meeting's on the eighth of August. At the end of the month, we will be looking at going to maybe a retreat.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add to that fantastic report. I do want to say that the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency has their affordable housing consultant, Enterprise Partners, Community Partners, in town that week of our meeting, the first full week in August, the sixth through the eighth, I believe. And they're hosting open houses at their offices, if you're interested in attending that. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations on moving from one chairmanship to another.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, item eight, discussion and possible initiation to amend Reno Municipal Code Title eighteen regarding signs for drive-through facilities. Sienna, is this you?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the record, Sienna Reid, senior planner. This is an agenda item that we've brought forward at the request of the planning commission. So we are looking for action this evening for the commission to initiate work on Reno Municipal Code Title eighteen regarding signs for drive-through facilities. You'll remember that there was a fair bit of discussion with regards to the McDonald's variance and special use permits and a desire to take another look at some of our on-premise sign standards as they relate to drive-through facilities, and really maybe take a closer look at some of our animated sign standards to make sure that we're not creating kind of unintended consequences. So we are certainly looking for any feedback that you might have for us. We feel like we did hear a fair bit of discussion when that item came forward and understand some of the concerns, but we are certainly looking to get additional feedback tonight.
Okay, thank you. I am, I do have a request to speak for him on this item, and I know I want to have Commissioner Wieske weigh in on this, but I'm going to start with our public comment. So Lori Ray, please.
Hi, Lori Ray, for, on behalf of CENIC Nevada. And I'm just here to say that we hope that there are public workshops on this issue. So as you go through this process, that we can be involved, and we can let you know how we feel about how it goes. And we're also very glad that you are doing it. We felt the same way you did about the McDonald's sign, that it was certainly not the one that we wanted to catch in our net, but it did. And it wasn't your fault. I mean, you guys worked really hard. We were there with you until one in the morning when you approved the digital sign regulations that were not, you know, subsequently approved by the city council. So this is what all that there is on animated signs for the city right now. And so that's why, when you go that simply, those are the problems that come up. And I know sign codes are very difficult, and they're hard to write, and there's a lot of argument over them. But I think the more detailed you get, the better outcome you have, because then people can look at it and say, no, I don't qualify, or yes, I do, which, you know, helps everybody. So we would really like to be part of the process, if there is a public process for this, and not just the three minutes, but if there's a workshop or something. So that's all we wanted to say, and we hope we can participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori, and I don't imagine that this commission would have it any other way without having your participation. So with that discussion, I'm going to start with Commissioner Wieske, just because he was the one that specifically requested this item, so I'd like to open the floor to him.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My request has just been cut in half because Lori took the first half of what I was going to ask for. Although, you know, what, the reason I asked for the request, and I think the reason that we would, we're all interested in it, is so that when we have an opportunity to create less light pollution by using a, by using newer technology and cutting down on light pollution overall, that we should be able to use it in corridors, downtowns, wherever we have these applications coming before us as another tool to look at, to be respectful to the entire community. I would hope that we could, you know, have a workshop coming forward to invite the public to participate in with us, even if it's a special meeting, if that's what it requires. But at the same time, I said workshop, not workshops, and I would hope that it doesn't take three to five or eight years to get through this process, because dimming lighting is better for us all. The sooner the better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wieske. Additional comments? Mr. Marshall.
I worry that this might displace work on other priorities, and so I'd like to hear from staff on, is this something, I don't want to, I think it's a, it's one of many issues that, particularly code issues. I wonder if this could be addressed during update of, you know, the Title eighteen effort to implement the regional plan, excuse me, the new master plan, sorry. And, you know, how many times are we running, is this particular provision causing difficulties? And is it worth elevating resolution of this issue above perhaps more impactful things that we could be doing with that time? And could it be folded into, you know, overall update as opposed to breaking it out and spending time on one thing? I know that probably delays it, but if we're not seeing the kind of, you know, the other instances of the McDonald's signs within three hundred feet of, you know, those special circumstances, then is it worth our time as a commission focusing on this particular issue? And, you know, when we've got a lot of other fish to fry?
Can I ask a follow-up question to that, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Sienna, won't this affect Title eighteen updates that are taking place right now?
So for the record, Sienna Reid, just to provide a little bit more background on how a potential amendment to address drive-through signage and digital signage in relation to it relates to the overall code update. So, you know, we are certainly getting ready to kick off the zoning code update. We're kind of in phase one right now. We're going to be swiftly moving into phase two. We do have a targeted code assessment that was prepared by Clarin and Associates as part of the kind of last steps of the master plan. It has recommended that we actually take an overall update to the sign code after the rest of the zoning code is updated, just because sign codes tend to be a little contentious and definitely need some kind of strong and lengthy outreach often. So it would be staff's preference to kind of take forward what we consider to be, hopefully, a small and targeted amendment in relation to some of these prohibited locations. If, under certain conditions, you're actually improving the situation in terms of signage, whether that be from a size, number, brightness, shielding type of perspective. So we think we can do it in a fairly targeted way, not saying that we won't, you know, conduct public outreach or a public workshop, given that this type of signage does generally generate a fair bit of interest. But we hope that it would be targeted, and then, you know, we could potentially integrate other components that are useful into the larger sign code update when that happens. But we don't anticipate that being, you know, on the forefront of the overall zoning code update.
Mr. Chairman, comment?
Please.
I would agree with Commissioner Marshall on that, in that my initial request was based upon trying to do it in conjunction with a Title eighteen update. I can tell you from the design side of things from my, that my firm is involved in, there are a number of retail establishments, food establishments, that this sign ordinance could affect in a positive way, in my personal opinion. And I would like, you know, I know those things are coming down the path rather quickly since building department has let everybody know that new codes are going to be put into effect in a few months, and so a lot of people are trying to get permits issued before the new codes. And, but I don't want to take anything away from the bigger picture that we have going on. That is definitely more important. That's my comment. Thank you.
Okay. Additional comments or thoughts on this? I guess my thought, Commissioner Johnson, would be just looking at the way this was listed in terms of, you know, amending Title eighteen for signs for drive-through facilities. The issue that came before us was because we had one specific location that was distinctly prohibited. I'm not sure that, as, you know, Commissioner Wieske pointed out, that all of these additional locations fall into that same category. I mean, I think a lot of our arterial commercial, neighborhood commercial, community commercial locations allow for some of this to happen in a way that, you know, was not the problematic issue that we had come before us. So I guess I came in tonight thinking, yes, this needs to take place, but in light of some of the broader picture and the entire review of Title eighteen, maybe this either goes in as a part of that ongoing discussion that comes before this board, or as was recommended, rolls into something that occurs on a broader signage picture. So I'm not sure exactly, you know, if there is a specific direction that commission wants to make, but I guess my thought is it sounds like we've made our concerns clear about this item, and moving forward, maybe it is best to include this as part of the ongoing work that's already in place, that we will have an opportunity to review again. Because I'm pretty sure if we go with a broader signage package discussion, that will be multiple discussions, that will be public outreach, that maybe gets a broader discussion to address some of these bigger pictures. So unless there is a strong desire to stay with a specific initiation of this from the commission, I would say we just allow this to occur as a part of the ongoing and not look to do something specific to this item. And then, you know, I don't know if you need me to make, have a motion for, ask for a motion for that, or, you know, how that, how this works on a discussion here.
If I could just provide a tiny bit more background, I was going to cover it under our next agenda item, but, let's see, yesterday, the city council did consider on appeal the McDonald's variance and special use permits. They did choose to continue consideration of that item pending an outcome on the ordinance. They did express, knowing that this was an agenda item on this commission's meeting this evening, they did express that if the commission chose not to sponsor, or excuse me, initiate the amendment, that they would be willing to do so. So I do think, one way or another, that the commission will likely see some type of an amendment to Title eighteen coming forward in maybe a kind of general fall 2018 timeframe.
As a standalone item? As, as a standalone item as proposed here, is that what?
That is, that is the general direction that we think we could bring an item forward quickly under, and I do think it would also give us an opportunity if we, you know, explore some kind of opportunities to incorporate some different type of lighting standards, illumination, digital, all of those types of things for our drive-through facilities. We might be able to kind of work from that basis as we think about how to potentially improve the overall sign code later. So I think there, there might be some good opportunities, even, even with a targeted type of amendment to Title eighteen.
So then going back to, I will open it up to the commission, but I guess clarification, since, at least I've not been on the commission when we've initiated one of these, is there a formal process? Are you looking for a motion and a vote to recommend that staff does this? Is that what we're looking for here? If we choose to go down this route?
If, if the planning commission chooses, we would be looking for a motion for the planning commission to initiate work to amend Title eighteen regarding those signs for drive-through facilities.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Wieske. I propose to have request staff to make an amendment to Title eighteen regarding signs for drive-through facilities and bring it back to us for consideration, as well as having a Title eighteen revision when that time, when Title eighteen is being revised.
Thank you. Is that a proposal or a motion?
A motion.
Thank you.
Proposing to motion.
You're proposing to motion. Okay. Okay, I have a motion to that effect. Do I have a second? Commissioner Gower.
Commissioner Gower, I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the recommendation?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Okay. Moving on. Item number nine, staff announcements.
All right, thank you again, Sienna Reed. Do have a few items to give you kind of a status report on in terms of city council. After the break yesterday, there were a variety of ordinance adoptions, so of cases that you've seen a little while ago now. The Echo Avenue zoning map amendment, the Ranchera PUD amendment, the Mountain View zoning map amendment, the Fuse forty-four zoning map amendment, and then also the project progress zoning map amendment were all adopted yesterday. You'll also remember before you a couple of times was the Logistics Center Phase Two, to kind of that, a distribution warehouse center between Military and Lemon Drive. There was a request to amend the conditions associated with that project ultimately to allow for 24-hour operations on the site. That project had been conditioned to go back up to the city council in terms of evaluating sound studies and ultimately 24-hour uses. So with additional acoustical information and the study of a similar site, the council did ultimately choose to amend those conditions to allow for 24-hour operations. They did put an additional condition on that project for some additional walls on the east side of Lemon Drive. And then, as I mentioned, there was a continuation of that appeal of the planning commission's decision on the McDonald's variance and special use permits. And with that, I don't have any other announcements.
Thank you. Item ten, commissioner's suggestions for future agenda items. Seeing none, move on to item eleven, public comment. This item is for either public comment and any action item or for any general public comment. Michelle, any requests to speak forums?
No, I do not.
Anyone still in the audience wishing to make a comment under this item? Seeing nobody bum rushing the stage, I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to item twelve, ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night.